Is five forty-five, five forty-six. And so I will call to order the September fifth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the pledge of allegiance. You would rise, please. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We allow time for a public comment at the beginning of our meetings. We have three people signed up here. Is there anyone online that is seeking recognition to speak?
No.
Okay. Then we have three. If you could limit your remarks to three to four minutes, we would appreciate that. And what I'll do is call your name if you'll come to the I guess you don't have a microphone there, but come to the center lectern and give your name and your address for the clerk's record, please. So first, excuse me, is Barbara Chamberlain.
Barbara Chamberlain, at seventeen forty-nine Clermont Drive, Hendersonville. And I want to first say thank you for all the help you've been doing for our street and the neighborhood. It was quite a disaster after that. But right now, I have a problem with our easement behind our property as it goes up the hill toward Orleans and Highgate. Back when Mr. Hoots was in office in the eighties, he used to get a group from the correctional facilities to clean out that ditch that goes up the hill, but after the nineties, nothing was done. And I had come to one of the meetings here in regards to that matter a long time ago, but it's presented more of a problem since we've had this hurricane. And it really needs some attention since several of their houses on the hill, the odd number side, gets a lot of drainage now because it's the ditch is all filled in, and so the water from above Highgate and Orleans comes right down that hill into and I found quite a bit of mud and everything into our home which we hadn't had before in the cellar. So I thought I'd call that to your attention to see if something could be navigated now that you're undergoing so much preparations of cleaning up the neighborhood. That could be one of the things that you could deal with too. We had had it done before. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Chamberlain, what's your address? What's your address?
Seventeen forty-nine Clermont Drive.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, they just put the pole in our easement so we can have Wi-Fi. I have been disconnected. So we're hoping to get that Saturday. Thank you.
Okay, we'll have staff take a look at that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Lynn Williams.
Thank you for your time. Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. First, I wanted to start by recognizing and congratulating former City Council, Hendersonville City Councilwoman Debbie Roundtree for her prestigious appointment to the Governor-elect Josh Stein's Hurricane Recovery Task Force. Pretty excited for her and for our community. I know she's been doing a lot of work helping local folks get connected to FEMA. So I wanted to give her a shout out. I'm also, as you can see, wearing this shirt about justice for Elijah. So we did have a memorial this past couple, in the past week or so, there was a paper, I said, sorry, an article in the Times News. And yes, the family and Patricia King and the community is still looking for justice. So that means District Attorney Murray needs to step up and open this investigation and further it so we can get justice. And then the only other point, well, one thing I wanted to also recognize was this historic day that once Councilwoman-elect Baxter takes her seat, that I believe it's the first all-women city council in the history of Hendersonville. So that's, that's awesome. So I want to congratulate this body for that. I'm excited to see the kind of work that women can do in the role of leadership for our community. And then lastly, I wanted to, yes, congratulate Ms. Baxter for her appointment and her win, her election. And then lastly, the ordinance about the hemp. I just wasn't really clear where we stood on tobacco products or pornography, gambling, pharmaceuticals. You know, because all of these are addictive in nature and not accessible to people under eighteen or twenty-one, whatever it is. So I guess my question was if we're doing this for alcohol and for hemp, is it already in the books for tobacco? Or are we going to do this for tobacco as well? And then some other, you know, high-risk things, you know? I mean, a car dealership, that was across the street. Teenagers die in cars all the time as well. Fast food, that kills people through heart attacks, and that's across the street. So, you know, just giving further consideration to just tobacco, I mean, to just alcohol and CBD. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and is it Brett Warner?
Good evening. Brett Warner, seven oh six Goldfinch Drive, Green Meadows. Good evening, Mayor, and fellow members of the board. Without spoiling too much of the presentation frame from UNC that we may be giving this evening, I feel that you have a monumental opportunity to connect Main Street and the newly redesigned Seventh Avenue via Fourth Avenue, and also anchor my community of Green Meadows and Ash Street, referring to the Oriole Mill. We have enormous opportunity and possible funds available in the wake of Helene, and Frank and his team have provided the data and tools to ensure our community can meet the needs of its current residents. I urge the city to be aggressive in ensuring these properties are community-focused and ideally locally owned. I also want to mention, disagree with those of you who voted against the First Avenue project. The zoning board voted in favor of it, one resident voted against, and the developer made every remedy as requested throughout that project. He also got an additional twenty-five parking spots that was not required. And this type of infill is greatly needed for success, and Frank will highlight that throughout his presentation. Limiting developments to only two stories going forward will not work long-term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. All right. Get back to my agenda here. Consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda this evening? Or not a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Let's have it, and we have our agenda. And we do have a few items of business that carried over. First of these is, actually, the first two are regarding regulation of consumable hemp-derived products. One is a regulation for civil penalties and the other is for criminal penalties. So if City Attorney Beaker would lead us through.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have prepared for you to consider an ordinance to regulate the sale of hemp-derived consumable products near schools. There was some legislation that was introduced into the legislature earlier this year but that did not pass that would accomplish the same thing that this, or much the same thing that this will accomplish if you, if you propose it. But in the meantime, I had been asked to take a look at this until that could occur. If you look at the cover here, it gives you kind of an example of some of the hemp-derived consumable products that there are available. A Coke, cannabis Coke, a chocolate bar, patches, gummies, hemp flour. And many of these also contain THC and do produce a high like marijuana. So what is a hemp-derived consumable product? Well, hemp is the plant cannabis sativa, but it has a delta-nine THC concentration of not more than three-tenths of one percent on a dry weight basis. Well, delta-nine THC is the THC, the active ingredient in marijuana. So if it has less than point-three percent and it is a cannabis plant, then it is considered hemp. And so, delta-nine THC is illegal. However, other variants of THC in hemp products are perfectly legal. The most common one that you'll see is we have delta-eight, we have delta-eight THC. And so the definition of hemp-derived consumable products is a product, hemp product, that is intended for human ingestion or inhalation that contains less than point-three percent of delta-nine, but which contains any other hemp-derived cannabinoid in excess of that amount. So that means CBD. If you look at the definition of hemp-derived cannabinoid, there's CBD, there's delta-eight, delta-seven. There are many variants of cannabinoids. And if any of these are present more than point-three percent, then it's going to be a hemp-derived consumable product. Now, ingestion means to take it into your body, be that through your mouth by swallowing it, through tissue absorption like through transdermal delivery, subcutaneously, or needle injection, any way that you absorb it into your body, that is considered ingestion. And then inhalation, of course, is breathing it in through your nose or your mouth. So what does this ordinance do? It, just quite simply, it makes it unlawful to sell or give a hemp-derived consumable product to somebody who is under the age of twenty-one within a thousand feet of a school or in a public park. And it also makes it unlawful for anyone under the age of twenty-one to possess, purchase, or attempt to purchase a hemp-derived consumable product in those same locations. If you look to the right, that is, the blue is an outline of the property of Hendersonville High School. And I've drawn two circles. You'll have to excuse there, approximately a thousand and then out another thousand to make two thousand feet to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about. But basically, anywhere within a thousand feet of the blue line, it would be prohibited to sell or give a hemp-derived consumable product to somebody under the age of twenty-one. Please stop me at any time if you have any questions. So there are two ordinances in your packet that relate to this. And the reason is, I separated it into two because to adopt anything that incurs a criminal penalty requires two readings. So the first ordinance that only imposes a civil penalty, if you pass that tonight, it will be effective when you pass it. The criminal penalty, if you decide to adopt the one to impose criminal penalties, it would be, you would adopt it tonight, and then you would have to adopt it a second time. And then it would be effective as to criminal remedies the second time. And so that's why there are two separate items, because I felt like you would want part of it to go into effect immediately. This is a police power ordinance, and that is why you don't have to have a public hearing on it. And the reason we can regulate this is because the state has not regulated it yet. Question came up about tobacco and all those. The state is already regulating that. They've occupied the field. So our ability, City Council's ability to regulate that is very limited. But since there are no statutes that govern the sale of hemp to people under the age of twenty-one, you have the authority under your police power to do that. So why regulate? You know, as with any ordinance, you make findings as to why, why you might want to do this. And so I've set out in the findings, in the whereas clauses, the four, these four things to be your findings, that there are many hemp-derived products containing legal cannabinoids that can have the same psychoactive effects as marijuana. It's not required to be approved by the FDA, and so there is no quality control or no control over the amount of THC that could be in a product. So kind of, it puts the public at risk. And that many retail establishments sell these products, and there is no age limit. And so you want to make them less readily available to students, hence the thousand-foot separation. And that you're doing this to protect the public health and safety of persons under the age of twenty-one to make, by making them less readily available.
Is it time for questions?
Yes, anything?
Sure. Are we delineating the difference between hemp and CBD? Because CBD doesn't actually have the psychoactive ingredients? And so are we differentiating that at all?
This does not, this does not. It just means that they can't buy it near school.
Okay.
And so that's the limited purpose of this. And so, and again, the CBD products aren't regulated by the FDA either. And so it makes it much cleaner and easier to just include them all.
If there were to be a criminal ordinance, is the DA's office willing to actually prosecute those? Or do we know if that's a thing that they're doing?
I have not talked with the DA about that. I mean, the DA has told me they will prosecute anything, anything we arrest people for. But as you're aware, the misdemeanor violations of city ordinances has largely been decriminalized. If somebody is arrested, they have to just show right now that they haven't done it again in the last thirty days, or that they've taken steps to remedy whatever caused them to do the violation, and then it gets dismissed. So it's, you know, highly unlikely that if they don't repeat violate the ordinance, that they would end up with a criminal record.
And you might have already said this, but maybe I missed it. Does this, is this only pertaining to people actually purchasing or the actual people selling?
It's both.
Okay.
It has provisions for both. They can't sell it or give it within a thousand feet, and you can't purchase it if you're under twenty-one, within a thousand feet of a school.
Do we have the ability to regulate internet sales in and around schools where people that are underage, under this statute of like twenty-one, would be able to purchase these products? I mean, we wouldn't be able to control any of that. And so people could still sit in their classroom if they wanted, really, and order whatever they wanted online if they wanted to.
It's not purporting to do that. I mean, I guess technically you could say if they're purchasing it on their phone within a thousand feet, that's a violation. But you'd have to catch them and prove that, you know. It's mainly to prevent them from going into a store that's located nearby and
Like across the street?
Yes, and purchase.
Then they buy online from the one across the street. They would be walking over there to get it. I don't know if even doorDash it.
I don't know, but one point I do want to make is this, this does not govern the school grounds. This is up to the school to govern what happens on schools, on the school ground.
So if, looking at the ordinance, it, within a thousand feet of school or in a public park, not within a thousand feet of
That's correct.
Just within the park.
That's correct.
I guess I'm still a little worried about there not being a difference in here with specifically CBD. I mean, I understand the delta THC strains, but the CBD is additionally beneficial to people, and people use the products as opposed to pharmaceuticals and anti-anxiety meds and whatever else they may be self-medicating with. And so I just, I wish there was a way that we could have some sort of a provision between CBD-specific products.
So you would delete that from the definition? That one cannabinoid. It's cannabidol, cannabid-ile, CBD. But I was trying to not have loopholes in the ordinance so somebody could say they were going in the store to get that instead of to get a THC product. And so it's only applies to those that are within a thousand feet of a school.
And currently, they have to be how old to even enter there in the first place? There's no age.
There's no age. And so they could, you know, if they're going in, they could say, I'm going in there to buy the CBD, not the THC or the whatever else. So that's why I made it all-inclusive. And to be honest, I also modeled this after that legislation that placed a twenty-one-year-old age limit on the purchase of exactly this, including CBD. The state legislation would do that as well.
Are there, I'm sorry, but I just feel like there's something like weird things. Are there stores now, I think there are, that sell CBD products that also sell like, like a pharmacy?
Sure.
Like Walgreens or something like that? So would we then be prohibiting twenty-one-year-olds from entering into an establishment like that?
No, no. I mean, so with a vape shop, right, they sell all different kinds. CVS sells, that's a minor part of what they sell, right? And so it's much less likely that they're going in there to purchase, and it's only persons under twenty-one, right? Persons twenty-one and over could go into any of the stores. So, but the ones that are targeted there are hemp shops, vape shops. That's primarily what they sell, that and nicotine products. So.
Does the ordinance save vape shops?
It does not. It doesn't regulate the type, the shop itself. It regulates the sale by anybody. So if there was a CVS across the street, they wouldn't be able to sell it to somebody under twenty-one either. It's just making it so that kids can't go across the street at lunch and buy, you know. I mean, they could go farther away than a thousand feet and still get it at a store that's
Could they go in there, though?
Well, so it's a matter of, I'm getting near territory, but it's a matter if you have this in place and then you see a minor going in the store, then it piques your interest of, you know, and if that's all they sell in there, are they going in there to buy legal? It gives you not, maybe not quite probable cause, but at least piques your interest if you see a minor going in the store, if they're not, if they can't sell. It's like you see a minor going into an ABC store. You don't.
Because I think that, I think the ABC store, they have to be twenty-one to enter into the store.
Maybe so.
Because I think that's what the sign says on the outside. So I guess that's my, I just, I mean, like you, I don't want there to be loopholes, but then I also want to not affect businesses that are already existing that may actually be selling these products, but they sell other products that somebody that is younger would want to purchase or that's not illegal in any way. I don't know, I just always think of all these extra things when we're
Councilman, or any of the, I mean, you know, this is for your consideration. Obviously, you don't have to adopt it. Like, if you've got more questions, you want to think about it some more.
Sure.
I know Henderson County adopted an ordinance. However, depending on what happens in the legislature next week, that ordinance may or may not be valid. If you want more time, there had been some conversations between the city and the county. If you want more time to do that, you have that opportunity, more time to think about it. It is something the state is considered to regulate. They have not regulated at this point. Don't know if it's going to come back in the, in the long session in January.
The county adopted a zoning ordinance amendment to put a separation, a two-thousand-foot separation for a store that primarily sells nicotine or hemp, both. This is a police power ordinance. I think it's on Lou's to-do list to propose a separation as well. It's just that takes time. It takes, you have to send it to the planning board. You have to have a public hearing on it. And it would just purely be a separation, and the existing, any existing store would be grandfathered.
Just depending on how quickly you want to move on this.
Amen. We could leave CBD in there for now. It's not saying no one can buy it, it's just people under twenty-one. And couldn't we always change it?
Sure.
Or revise it later?
Sure.
So at least we have something on the books before the one across the street opens?
I think it would be a very miniscule number who could legitimately purchase CBD or have a legitimate reason to purchase it from when you're under twenty-one. So the first one is the civil penalties, which would go into effect immediately.
Yes.
And the one with criminal penalties, we would need a second vote. Could do that at our second monthly meeting? Or does it, is there a certain time limit you have to wait?
You can do it at your second monthly meeting, sure could.
Except there's not
Oh, except there's not one.
Oh, that's right.
So it would be January.
January meeting.
Can we just put it on consent if that's what you want to do?
I'm personally less inclined to do anything criminally right now just because I feel like North Carolina is going to legislate this at some point, hopefully sooner than later, and just come up with some more clear definitions of expectations. But not those just civil.
The one reason I did include, this is just, it's a hundred percent your call whether to do this at all. But one reason I did include the criminal is because if a sixteen-year-old buys it, are you going to put a five-hundred-dollar civil penalty on them? I don't know. You know, it's a little bit harder to put a civil penalty on a minor, I think. And so, anyway, a criminal penalty.
What would happen there if it was a criminal penalty?
Well, I would think that that would be the police department's call as far as whether they actually arrested, but they, it certainly gives them the authority to say, get out of here, you're not supposed to be doing this, that kind of thing, you know? But whether, were they going to threaten them with a civil penalty? You know, a teenager, I don't know if that would have much of a deterrent effect. I don't know. You want to speak to that?
Anyone under eighteen is a juvenile. You couldn't arrest them with that crime anyway without a juvenile, you know, given us a security custody order, which they would never do in this case. But, but anybody eighteen to twenty-one, we could issue a citation, we could take to jail, depending on, you know, the severity of it, imagine if the store is, you know, we could do a, you know, an investigation, find out they're selling a lot, and then they would, we would arrest somebody for that likely. So there's, it just gives us a little bit more ability to, to control.
It's just a tool.
Questions, discussion, or if someone would like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council to adopt an ordinance to impose civil penalties for the sale or possession of cannabis near schools as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the ordinance imposing civil penalties, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Let's have it. One with criminal, if we would approve that tonight and think about it for a month, we could decide not to vote on it again, and nothing would happen.
That's correct.
But if we do, then we would have that option. So we'd have a month to, to decide if we wanted to do criminal.
Which I think I like better than waiting until January to do the first vote on it. Because then we'd have to wait until February to do this first.
And if we wanted to wait till February, you know, if we want to give ourselves a couple months, again, is there a time limit?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So if we do it, we're setting it up for time to think about it and either vote or not vote, had some future time.
I already read one.
Anyone else want to make a motion tonight?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion. I move City Council to adopt an ordinance to impose criminal penalties for the sale or possession of cannabis near schools as presented. for the sale or possession of cannabis near schools as presented.
Is there any further discussion? Not. Those in favor of the ordinance imposing criminal penalties, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. All right. Thank you. All right, twenty-two four bonuses. This is something that just sort of.
Yes, just kind of.
Go back to the bonuses today.
Mayor of all, Member of City Council, a member of council brought it to our attention that based on how hard our team worked during Hurricane Helene, how it may be appropriate to put one time. We do this from time to time, but not every year. We offer a bonus in appreciation of their efforts and their work over Helene. So staff went into action and put forth a proposal that we would offer a one-time, thousand-dollar bonus for all full-time staff and five-hundred dollars for permanent, part-time staff. The total budgetary cost across all funds is about three-hundred and thirty thousand dollars, give or take a little bit of money. That is very close based on where people are as far as number of employees. So we would offer that to you, we would fund it through contingency and fund balance appropriation for the various funds. So I'll stop there and ask if any council members have anything they'd like to add or any questions.
I'll jump on it, since I kind of poked a bear. Thinking back on this second little tenure on City Council, some really cool things have happened. A hurricane not being one of them. But going back, seeing the Larkhorn Mini Golf get opened up and how well that's been received, the incredible use it's gotten, it's been, it's been a real bright spot. Then I got to jump right on Fire Station One and how well that has worked out. And in thinking about it, you know, it's built as a firehouse, but it actually became kind of a beacon of hope when the hurricane visited us. In a very short time after it, after it hit, City Manager Connet turned it into a emergency operations center, second to none. And firefighters shared their space with a bunch of us. They made room for firefighters from other areas that came in to help. People were working twelve-hour shifts every day, sometimes longer than that. Some people didn't go home. Watched John and Brian tag-team these briefings in the morning and at night. They each had their strong points and they each got absolutely the very best out of everybody. Department heads and the staff were nothing short of incredible. Giving, changing hard conditions, communications failing. A lot of things were, we learned that couldn't have been ready for with this beast, but are more ready for them now. I saw the way staff just jumped right in, didn't complain, they're exhausted, going out, taking care of people, bringing them in. I saw people see the big firehouse and the fire trucks and walk up that had nowhere else to go. They lost everything and watched out. Law enforcement helped find families for them, helped their families, find their families or take them to shelters. And every day was an experience. Really tough times, but watching how everybody stepped up and how that firehouse became an absolute beacon of hope for so many and took us to the, to a bright side. How we had water before anybody else really had water. How we had a certain calm come over us very quickly. Hendersonville literally became like an oasis in a desert. And that's because of the people that were doing everything that worked with the city. And so when this came up, I asked John and Brian to look for the absolute maximum we could do without presenting problems. They did some real digging. I talked to other council members. I don't really care what anybody else did in the community or outside the community, it's what we can do. And the best thing we can always do is show support for our employees because they're the ones that are delivering the services. John leads a great team. I was amazed. And they're all so dead young, young, and they can just get it done. So I think we got them for a long time, but we have to do things that make them understand how much we appreciate them. This council has done that. I've been blessed to work with councils that don't take that for granted. And a mayor that just won't let that happen either. So, you know, I'm going to ask for any other discussions. Let it go ahead. Mayor, if you will, I would like you to come back to me when you're ready for a motion. And I'd like that to be my exiting motion, is to see, full times, get a thousand and part times, five hundred. Kind of hope in doing that, that everyone feels our respect, that we're all providing and me. So from the bottom of my heart, I'm grateful and I know I'm blessed just to live here. So, there you go.
Anyone else want to add anything?
You just said it all?
I think I did.
Good.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move City Council to authorize the city manager to provide a one-time appreciation bonus in the amount of one thousand dollars for our full-time staff and five hundred for permanent, part-time staff.
Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of the appreciation bonuses for our employees, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. And we'll get taken care of, I'm sure. Okay. We have some presentations. Chief? Tell us about the.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Blair Mahan, the Police Chief. I want to very quickly, over the next maybe couple of minutes here, talk to you about the fact that our agency is now an internationally accredited law enforcement agency. So I'll tell you kind of what that is.
Could you say that one more time again?
Internationally accredited law enforcement agency. If you'll, might as well just advance two slides there. So we went through the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies to seek this accreditation. This is the only, or at least the most prominent international accreditation agency for law enforcement in the world. And so this is a multi-step process. One, we had to, of course, enroll, you know, decide to do this. Once y'all hired me, John and I, oh, well, thank you. I think that's larceny, but. Let it slide. But after I, after I was hired here, actually, I'm sorry, well, let me go back. Allison, can I go back? All right. So let me go back and tell you what accreditation is. So this is, we have, we have comprehensive, uniformed policies that are, that meet industry best practices. So there's a commission of twenty-one law enforcement professionals, some judicial officials that decide on what are our best practices. And of course, they change over time. We have to report what we do, we have to do analysis of the work that we do every year. So this time of year, we're doing a lot of year-end annual reports, right, where we analyze the, for example, how many times we use force, what kind of force we use, is there opportunities for training, are there, you know, do we need to change policy, different things. So we're constantly analyzing what we do that helps us make informed decisions. Obviously helps us prepare for natural disasters, right, which I think we were able to show in the last couple of months. It definitely helps us build community relationship and we are, we are reviewed by outside folks. So this is not me telling you we're great. These are people that have nothing to do with the city of Hendersonville, coming here, review us and tell us that we're meeting these standards. And this is part of our, our continuous pursuit of excellence, always looking to, to improve everything that we do. So again, back to what I said, this is a multi-step process. Since this is our initial application, it's what they call the self-assessment phase. And we have thirty-six months to, to complete this accreditation phase. I'll, I'll highlight what some of our staff did later and show you, you know, how we actually progressed through this thing. So we have a web-based assessment where people look at all of our files. And then we actually had a retired chief, retired city manager come onsite for a couple of days and meet with our staff and do interviews, talk to people in the public to get a real sense of how we are as an agency. And so once this happens, we, you know, this isn't a, we get this award and there's nothing else with it. Now we have to actually maintain compliance and show that every single year going through, as long as we decide to stay involved in this process. So Kalia is not, it's not inexpensive, but we were able to get a grant to help us pay for this process. So the original cost of getting into it, we paid a hundred percent by grant, also hired a consultant to help us. Also zero cost to the city. So, but as we go forward, there is, of course, an annual cost as we go, you know, on an annual basis. But if we decide to get our communications center accredited at some point, then, you know, we, we're eligible for some potential cost savings if we decide to go in that direction down the road. So, you know, I pulled this from the site, this is maybe a little bit more eloquent than I would, that I would classify it. But why, why this is important to you as a council, to the folks that are sitting in this room that are listening here is, you know, one, we're able to show our community that, that we are, we are current with what's going on in the world. We're not on an island where we don't understand that we were on an island two months ago. But you know, we're not out by ourselves and not paying attention to what's going on. It gives the city a stronger defense in civil lawsuits because we're, again, our policies and our practices are meeting what, you know, progressive, you know, advanced law enforcement agencies should be doing. We're reducing our risk and liability on our folks because we have things, we have controls in place like vehicle pursuits and different procedures, right? We, and so that helps us reduce our risk. We certainly have greater accountability because we're reporting everything that we do to you as the council. And of course, we do that to all of our citizens and residents that come through here. And so, and then, of course, this helps you understand that regardless of who the police chief is or who the staff is, this, this agency is always going to operate at a high level. And so we get additional support from you elected leaders. So some fun facts here. We had to meet one-hundred-and-eighty-four standards that the commission set upon us. So we have thirty-six months to do this and we did it in fifteen months. So our, Monica Howard is our accreditation manager and she was one-hundred percent the right person to put in this position because she made it happen. And we had zero deficiencies when they came to the onsite, which was very rare. In fact, the assessor that came commented how rare it was and made a point to, to point that out to the commit, on his report to the commission. And so when we went to Jacksonville to sit before the commission and answer before them, there were no, we had no conditions that we had to meet. It was just, we basically got to talk about ourselves for a few minutes because they didn't, there was nothing that they could pick apart. And so, but there's only thirteen-hundred agencies in the world that are Kalia accredited. Eighty-three of those are in North Carolina. And we are now only the third agency in western North Carolina, the other two being the city of Asheville and Buncombe County that, that are actually Kalia accredited. And so because we now have this, we also have the risk reduction review through the league of municipalities. We now have a maximum of a twenty percent discount in our insurance premiums, which I'm sure everybody can appreciate. So that, you know, again, we see some real immediate benefits from that. So I'm very proud of staff to have gone through this. I will, you know, certainly entertain any, any questions. But, you know, when I started on the job, when I was working in this, in the town of Apex, we decided to do Kalia accreditation. And I, I didn't like it. I poo-pooed it like most cops do and think that this is, you know, they're going to come in and tell us how to do our job. But what I've, what I've learned over, over many years now is that this is a great management tool. And so you understand and everybody that's, you know, in the community understands that this agency is always going to do the right things. And we're always going to have outside people look at us to make sure we're doing this. So I won't always be the police chief, John won't always be the city manager. But as long as we're involved in this process, this agency is going to be operating at a high level, which is a goal that, that we agreed upon when I came here to really get to this level. So it's a pretty major milestone for us and I'm, I'm very proud of staff to get this done. Monica did a great job. She, maybe we give her a two-thousand-dollar bonus this year. But, but it's been, it's been a really great ride and I'm just very proud of staff to have gotten this done. And I'm, I'm proud to be able to bring it to y'all. We don't have the actual certificate yet, but I've got a nice, pretty folder we can hold up in our picture. So, but any questions that council has or I'm happy to answer?
I just want to congratulate Chief and the department and Monica for your, your hard work and to this council. This would not have been possible without the support of the city council. That's why I wanted to do it. This gentleman is still up here. And as you say, strong supporter of our team and helped us, you know, build a building and other things. So I want to make sure that this council can celebrate this accomplishment and just say how much I appreciate the support that you've given our police department. And I would love for, if we could, so maybe get the chief and the council members with a picture, holding the Kalia up and Monica and whoever, and we'll get a picture. That way, Bill can be on the front page of the paper.
John?
By midnight, by midnight.
John, can we like put the staff behind, like the police officers behind the?
Yeah, that would be good. So I'll get out of the way.
We got a sticker here.
Tell Monica to tell us what to do.
Switching places.
A special wrangler.
Made it, gets done.
Can I go first?
Go for it.
Okay. Oh, I'm right back there. Okay. It'll work.
All right, one more. Perfect.
Thank you all for your support. Again, I'm Blair Mahan, the Police Chief. So tonight, we want to recognize Captain Rich Olson. Rich, if you'll step up here. Rich has been with the city for thirty years and is retiring at the end of this month. And so we want to recognize him and ask that you grant us the ability to give him his sidearm and badge in recognition of his many years of service to the city of Hendersonville. So, Rich, would you like to say anything?
No, I'm just. I always, I always. It's been a privilege and an honor. I mean, thirty years, some days go by very, very slowly, but the years go by fast. So it's been my honor.
Wait a minute, you've never talked that short in your life.
I got, I got more, we'll talk about it.
I got your back, Rich. I won't let John talk too long.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council, is there a?
Council, is, uh, there a motion? To, uh, present the service weapon and badge?
Right here.
Oh, okay. Here it is.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Midwestern Council approved the resolution to award retiring Captain Rich Olson with his badge and service sidearm for a cost of one dollar.
Is there any discussion? No? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, all right.
We got to see the transfer. Yeah. Yeah, give that to John.
I make sure that gets to finance, John.
It absolutely, with a receipt.
With a name on it.
But thank you, thank you for that thirty years of service.
Absolutely.
He's got a son here with him too, so.
Okay, another special presentation here. Councilmember Miller.
So Mayor, members of city council, I didn't speak the last time, but, um, but he keeps doing this, he keeps coming and quitting, so I feel like, um, I feel like, um. I, I'd like the purpose to say Jeff, um, how much this team, um, with the city of Hendersonville has appreciated your leadership. You, your leadership in this community is, you can see it all over the community. Um, I know you like to be behind the scenes and, um, but if something needs to get done, everybody knows who to go to, um, and that's to Jeff Miller. And we, we sent you out last time, um, when you retired, the first time, um, with a rocking chair and, um, a nice resolution and we felt like, you know, that that would not be appropriate this time. We've done that once, but we wanted to recognize you. So Allison has put a nice, um, scrapbook together for you, um, with pictures and, um, opportunity for us to, to write comments and I hope you'll take time to read that over the next few weeks. But I cannot say enough about how. How your leadership over the last twelve months, um, brought stability, um, to us and as your city manager, I say thank you for that stability. Um, a year ago, um, when councilmember Smith resigned and then subsequently when, um, councilmember Roundtree, um, resigned, we, we had a great core, but we needed, um, two additional folks to fill the gap and we absolutely found the best. Um, and it, it started with you, um, and you, and you brought the stability, um, and, and the experience, um, we were able to get through a tough time. And I, I can't imagine going through Helene without, with, without your five, um, that we have, but just thank you for, and I think if people see the community, they saw this, these five individuals in the community stabilizing this community, providing leadership and clearly Jeff, um, that is because of your influence. Um, and I just want to say thank you and how much I've appreciated working with you. Um, and I hope I get to do it again at some point, but, um, um, just, um, thank you so much and I'll defer back to the mayor and the council.
I mean, he's not really going to go anywhere. He's still going to call us if we have something on the agenda that he doesn't like or, people will still go to him all the time. So this is not goodbye. You just get to come and go as you please during the meeting instead of being stuck here like us.
Or not come at all.
Yeah, you can just watch online.
Or not.
I'm going to start texting, you know, like, are you watching us?
No, I'm the one who received the ticks. And the PC, okay.
But in all seriousness, it has been really wonderful to serve with you, not once, but twice. Um, and I really appreciated being able to come to you, um, and ask questions about things that were difficult because I've not done this for as long as you have. So, um, Allison did a really nice job putting that together.
That's great.
It is wonderful and tracking all of us down.
Way better than a rocking chair. That's so much better.
Although if they gave you another rocking chair, you and Tam could sit on the porch.
Can you see my wife in a rocking chair? Unless it had jets on it.
Yeah, we just really appreciate your willingness to come back and, uh, help us out at a, at a very difficult time and, uh, your connections, especially during Helene, in and out of the community, uh, meant a great deal to everybody. Support, support you gave, all the folks working during that time was invaluable. So thank you.
Jeff, I just want to thank you as well. You and I have been friends for.
Ever.
Forever. We grew up together and I will miss you, but I know you'll text me, but because of you, I have learned so much in such a short period of time and I expect you to continue to grow me to be the best councilwoman in Hendersonville.
Did you put that in writing?
Yes, I did. No, I just want you to stay you, be true, stay you. And anytime that I can support you, any endeavor you're doing, you know my number and you know my address. I love you, bro.
Love you back.
You make me cry.
No crying.
No crying. Well, thank you, long someone all your life.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. And I have to tell, say thank you first before anything is that, never expected a second chance after I walked away. Got that phone call that I didn't know what was going on, but, you know, I'm, I'm glad I had the opportunity to do this. I'm glad I could, could be there and help where I could during that whole recovery process, which is still ongoing, no denying that. Met a group from Ohio today that brought fifteen new bicycles and all these things in that, uh, just wanted to do something to help at Christmas. So watching the strength of, of that team that, that I spoke of earlier and I won't dwell on it, was amazing. Seeing the mayor answering one phone call after another, just, I mean, what odds you call in any other city in, in a disaster and the mayor answers the phone. Everybody did their part and it was beautiful to watch in a very horrible situation. I'm glad I could have a little role in it. Glad I finally got to sit by Jennifer and John because the mayor wouldn't let us first time. So it's, that was fun and, uh, I'm sorry I haven't gotten to work with you more, but I'm, I'm just really glad we finally got you to come aboard and it's just made us so much stronger.
Because after you twisted my arm and threatened me.
I don't know why it finally took, uh, but it's been real. Uh, it's just amazing and, uh, the staff we have is incredible. John and Brian, they've built one hell of a team. It's been a pleasure to be a part of it. Yeah, I'll help wherever I can, you know that. I'm not ready to disappear just yet.
Can we start playing the music now? Maybe the music will go a little faster now.
The what?
Music will go a little faster, so.
All right, thanks a lot. That's it, right? Have great hopes for Gina. She and I've met, we've talked, we had a great time. They about had to use the hook to get us to stop. I have so much confidence in her. You know what? You're the Lone Ranger sitting up here, big guy. And, and I just look forward to great things that you guys can be together. Congratulations. This seat is dangerous, so learn to love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will take a, a recess to kind of reorganize.
Gina.
May.
Okay, and what I'd like you to do is please repeat after me. I and state your name.
I, Lindsey Simpson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I and state your name.
I, Lindsey Simpson.
Do swear that I will well and truly execute.
Do swear that I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City of Hendersonville City Councilmember.
Of City of Hendersonville City Councilmember.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
Thank you. I missed you guys.
It takes me a little longer to sign, maybe. You can actually read mine, sorry.
Whoa. Mayor burn. Sorry, Jill gets me every time. She's like, you gonna put your scribble on this? Right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Next. And you have one at volleyball, right?
Yeah.
Those kids are on priorities.
Okay. I and state your names.
I, Jennifer Hensley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I and state your name.
I, Jennifer Hensley.
Do swear that I will tru- well and truly execute.
That I do state, I will, what?
Do swear that I will well and truly execute.
I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City of Hendersonville City Councilmember.
Of City of Hendersonville City Councilmember.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. You need to sign here.
It's not official yet.
On the back.
My name's so slow.
She at least has an excuse for why her signature looks like that. So probably she don't have this memorized then.
I and state your name.
I, Margina Baxter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I and state your name.
I, Margina Baxter.
Do swear that I will well and truly execute.
Do swear that I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City of Hendersonville City Councilmember.
Of City, what?
City of Hendersonville.
City of Hendersonville.
City Councilmember.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. See? I was making those faces.
Would any of you like to fumble?
Sure, I'll comment. Naturally. You know, Jennifer and I were fortunate enough to get an extra year in our term. So it's been five years since we've sat on this board. And it's really hard to believe that it's been five years. Because I feel like we were just in this room and we just did those oaths. And it really has been an honor to be able to serve this city in this way. And to be able to work with all the staff members that make our city so great. Like, they're the reason why we all look so good. They're the ones doing the hard work every day. And so I'm just really thankful that the residents decided that I get to do this for four more years. Because it really is a joy. And I real- even if it is tough sometimes, I love being able to be a part of my community in this way. So thank you very much.
I just, I mean, echo what Lindsey said. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. And I love what I do and I just really enjoy being here. Thank you.
Sure. First, I just want to say that I am so incredibly proud to be a member of this community. This community raised me. It is my home. I'm so honored to get to serve in this way. And I'm so grateful that I get to serve alongside such an amazing council. And with such an incredible city staff. And I don't know if Jeff Miller, did Jeff Miller leave already?
Yeah.
Well. Well, very grateful to him for all of the work that he has done. And to everyone who's served on City Council for paving the way for me to be able to take some small part in continuing to do this good work. Thank you.
Awesome. All Lady City Council.
The next item of business is the election of a mayor pro tempore. Are there any nominations for mayor pro tempore?
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilwoman Jennifer Hensley for mayor pro tempore.
Councilmember Jennifer Hensley has been nominated as mayor pro tempore. Are there further nominations? Those in favor of Jennifer Hensley as mayor pro tempore, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. One round.
Do it again. Oh yeah, they laughed. You want me to hold it?
Yes. Are they, are they still here?
Oh, they're still here.
Did they leave?
No, they're still here. They're coming.
Okay, you get to do it again.
They're eating snacks.
Okay. Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay, I and state your name.
I, Jennifer Hensley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the laws of the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as City of Hendersonville Mayor Pro Tempore.
Of my office as City of Hendersonville Mayor Pro Tempore.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I and state your name.
I, Jennifer Hensley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of City of Hendersonville Mayor Pro Tempore.
The duties of the office of the City of Hendersonville Mayor Pro Tempore.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Did you give us different ones? Magic. It's like magic. I think I know a little bit how Jeff feels now. I'm like, oh, I feel. That's a lighter.
Yeah, no, this is what I'm thinking.
Okay.
So you. So this is who is on.
Hey, John, could you have some say more? Is there anything?
Yes, yes.
He's freezing.
I was wondering why those.
Schedule of meetings for 2025. You have that.
Mayor vote, members of City Council included in your agenda packet. Share with me one minute. You have your meeting schedule for 2025. Just draw your attention to a couple of changes. As you know, our regular meeting is the first Thursday of every month. Except for January this year because New Year's Day is on Wednesday. And we are moving our City Council meeting from January 2nd to January 8th, which will be Wednesday. And then because of the North Carolina City County Management Conference, we're moving our first meeting in February to February 12th, which is the Wednesday after the first Thursday. So those two changes on your regular meetings. Couple of meetings. Well, I'll do the second monthly meetings, which is typically the fourth Wednesday. However, we will be canceling the February meeting. Because we'll have the retreat on the 27th and the 28th. And we'll be canceling the December 24th meeting. Will not have it because of Christmas. So other than that, you have the two important, other important meetings are your retreats, February 27th, 28th, 2025. Location to be determined. And your budget workshop is Friday, May 2nd, 2025. All meetings, first meetings begin at 5:45 PM, second at 4:00. In this room, so right now.
Any questions or concerns about the scheduled meetings? Not that a motion to approve.
Why don't you make the first one? Okay. I move that City Council approve the 2025 Notice of Regular City Council Meetings as Presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the council meetings as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Now, appointment of council representatives to various boards. Members of council have a lot of committees, boards, that, that we each serve on. And Simpson has been working to get these straightened out, which I appreciate. So we'll just go down them. And we're hoping for nominations for these various boards and committees. First of all, the Business Advisory Committee. Are there nominations for representative to that?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Melinda Lawrence.
Melinda Lawrence has been nominated for the Business Advisory Committee. Are there further nominations? Those in favor of Melinda Lawrence for the Business Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And thank you for taking that one on. Diversity and inclusion. Are there nominations? The mayor by the charter is on that already. Are there nominations for the additional member?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Melinda Lawrence. I promise I'm not going to nominate her.
Are the further nominations for the Diversity and Inclusion Committee? Not those in favor of Melinda Lawrence and the mayor as designated in the charter, charter, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay. Downtown Advisory Board.
Madam Mayor, I nominate Lindsey Simpson for the Downtown Advisory Board.
Lindsey Simpson has been nominated for the Downtown Advisory Board. Are there further nominations? Not those in favor of Lindsey Simpson as representative to the Downtown Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. And got that slot filled. Environmental Sustainability Board. Are there nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Gina Baxter.
Gina Baxter has been nominated for the Environmental Sustainability Board. Are there further nominations? Not those in favor of Gina Baxter for the Environmental Sustainability Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. And then. Excuse me. Pointed to your, the, the board that you're currently serving on.
Yes.
Okay. Strategic Housing Plan Steering Committee. Two members. Are there nominations for the Strategic Housing Plan Steering Committee?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Hensley.
Jennifer Hensley has been nominated. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Lindsey Simpson.
Lindsey Simpson has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Not those in favor of Jennifer Hensley and Lindsey Simpson for the Strategic Housing Plans Steering Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Got that one. Tree Board. Nominations.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Lindsey Simpson for the Tree Board.
Lindsey Simpson has been nominated for the Tree Board. Are there further nominations? Those in favor of Lindsey Simpson for the Tree Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Water and Sewer Advisory Council. Are there nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Hensley.
Jennifer Hensley has been nominated for the Water and Sewer Advisory Council. Are there further nominations? Not those in favor of Jennifer Hensley for the Water and Sewer Advisory Council, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Okay. Henderson County Transportation Advisory Committee. Nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Hensley for the Henderson County Transportation Advisory Committee.
And are there further nominations? Those in favor of Jennifer Hensley for the Henderson County Transportation Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. And you're back on that one. And then the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization. Nominations for that?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Hensley.
Are there further nominations? Jennifer Hensley has been nominated. All those in favor of Jennifer Hensley for the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. To that. And also official congratulations for a war, an award from Land of Sky Regional Council for service to the region. And primarily, or especially because of serving on the French Broad River Transportation Advisory. So that was.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Yesterday that was given. So congratulations on that. Mills River Partnership, are there nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate. Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Gina Baxter.
Gina Baxter has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Those in favor of Gina Baxter for the Mills River Partnership, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Okay, Gina. Working on that one. Kind of goes along with the environmental sustainability. Land of Sky Regional Council. The mayor traditionally has been on that. You could nominate someone else if you want. But we also need an alternate for that. So are there nominations for Land of Sky Regional Council?
You want that? You want to be the alternate? Great, I nominate Melinda Lawrence.
Okay.
I can't remember a meeting in the last five years that the mayor wasn't at, that I had to go to.
And you can do it on...
Yes.
They do it via Zoom too. Are there further nominations for Land of Sky? Those in favor of Melinda Lawrence as the alternate and the mayor as the delegate, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Got that one. Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development. Kind of by their charter, the mayor is on that. If you wanted to make it official, someone could do that.
I'd like to nominate Mayor Volk. Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development.
Okay, Mayor Volk has been nominated for the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development. Are there further nominations? Those in favor of Mayor Volk on that committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. And the Local Government Committee for Cooperative Action. Are there nominations for that? Again, the mayor is one member and then we have one additional member to attend. The nominations for that.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Melinda Lawrence. Really did.
Are there further nominations? Those in favor of Melinda Lawrence and by charter, Mayor Volk, to the Local Government Committee for Cooperative Action, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. We have, I think that's, that's all of them. All right, excellent. Thank you. That took a while, but these are important committees and we do want to have them appropriately filled by people who will be able to attend. Thank you. Now, we get to the business. First of all, is the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council for the consent agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Okay. Now, presentation of the housing needs assessment by the UNC School of Government Development Finance Initiative.
Good evening, council. My name is Frank Maraca. I'm an assistant director with the Development Finance Initiative based out of the UNC School of Government. I'm here this evening to present an update about our work with the city and lead us through a discussion about the housing needs assessment completed last month. There is a blue envelope in front of you that has a copy of tonight's presentation, but also a copy of the much longer version of the housing needs assessment that we presented to the Strategic Housing Planning Committee last month. If you all would like to take a look at that as well. The School of Government, as many of you all are familiar with, is the largest university-based government training and advisory organization in the country. We train about 12,000 public officials each year all around North Carolina. The Development Finance Initiative, or DFI, has been around for over 10 years and is a program of the School of Government and advises local governments across North Carolina on public-private partnerships for real estate development. So working with communities to identify catalytic projects in downtowns, neighborhoods, distressed corridors. But over the past several years, we've been responsive to the growing needs and demands of local governments for assistance for developing affordable housing. And that's what we've been engaged by the city to do. Our scope is called an opportunity site identification and is really meant to help the city identify sites that will lead to feasible, affordable housing projects. Our work is split into a few different parts. At the beginning, we want to set housing priorities that will guide that site identification. So rather than simply looking at all sites equally, we want to know what are some sites that will meet the community's goals. And to do that, we conduct a housing needs assessment, which we're talking about today. But we also talk to many stakeholders to help provide stories and really ground us in those stories when we're looking at the data. We will come back early next year to present up to four sites that meet those housing priorities and will have a feasible path to development and present some high-level financial and site analysis for you all to consider as well. So the goal of the Opportunity Site ID process is to lead to a feasible project. And we look at feasibility through a few different lenses. We look at the site itself to determine if it can support the level of density that the community is interested in seeing. We look at the market data to see if, who are the folks most in need of housing assistance in Hendersonville and whether the site can support those housing solutions. We also look at the financial feasibility of the site. So what, how would a developer look at the site to determine the number of units that could be built there? And most importantly, what would be the likely gap funding required to make those sites realized? And then finally, the last thing that we look at, which is unique in our process, is we incorporate the community's priorities. So can this site support families or single individuals, homeowners or renters? And how are those set by the community? I wanted to share just some examples of housing priorities. For example, a community could be focused on specific household types. So I talked about families versus seniors, renters or homeowners, or various income levels across different employments. Housing priorities could also have a geographic focus. So you could be focused on prioritizing sites within a specific neighborhood, downtown or commercial corridor. Or you might have others that aren't reflected here. For example, you might want to maximize the number of units that you can achieve on a site. Or you might want to diversify your options and have both low density and high density on the site. You might want to prioritize potential partnerships. So you might want to work with a local church or nonprofit who might have land. And then finally, you might look to repurpose underutilized land already owned by the city. So I'll provide just a high-level summary of the housing needs assessment. Again, a more in-depth version of this is provided in the packet in front of you. But this is really just a summary to help guide the conversation. High-level population growth and limited new supply has pushed down the availability of housing within the city of Hendersonville. This first chart here shows the vacancy rate, both for rent units and for sale in blue. And shows that the vacancy rate for both of these housing types has declined from between 3% and 5% in 2012 to just at 2% and lower in 2022. In general, we say that a healthy housing market or a market with enough housing units for the community typically has a vacancy rate of around 7% to account for household formation, for folks searching for housing and natural turnover. But over the past 10 years, like a lot of communities, that vacancy rate has really moved away or dropped below that 7% threshold. In markets with low vacancy rates, this is where we tend to see prices increase. This next chart shows the median sale price for the city of Hendersonville in dark blue compared to the median sale price for the county in that lighter blue color. And over the past year, the median home price in the city has exceeded $400,000. Based off of current interest rates and where the capital markets are, those homes are typically affordable to households making about $120,000 a year. We are seeing the same type of housing cost increase among rental units as well. This chart shows the average rent among market-rate multifamily properties in the city. The blue line shows rents among Class A and B properties, which are typically the newest, highest-quality units within the city. Rents among those units increased about 25% after COVID and are roughly affordable to households making over 80% of the area median income, which I'll define in a moment. Rents among Class C properties, which tend to be older and lower quality, rents among those units have not increased at the same rate as the higher-quality units. That being said, there are significant challenges with quality among Class C units. The median year built of Class C units is in 1974, even accounting for renovations. Despite these large differences in quality, the vacancy rate among both these property types is less than 3%. High-level, with looking at Henderson County as a market, there is demand for about 10,000 housing units over the next five years. This is taking into account both the current unmet demand as well as projected household growth. So if Henderson County continues to grow as a housing market the way it has been over the past 10 years, we would expect there to be demand for about 10,000 housing units. In the pipeline, so developers, of course, are responding to this market and have been building a lot of housing over the past few years. There's about 5,700 units in the pipeline countywide. So overall, net demand for housing is around 4,300 units. That being said, yes, please.
Do we have any idea, out of that 5,700, how many of them that were approved or just not actually happening?
Great question. So these are all projects that are being tracked both by the city and the county currently. So ones that have been, that are stalled or officially stopped have been removed from this. And this also includes a few recently completed projects that were completed after 2022. So this 10,000 number is really looking at housing demand across all income needs. But I wanted to draw your attention to the full points at the bottom, which shows that about, of these 5,700 units, about 330 in the pipeline are affordable to low-income households. So within the city of Hendersonville, there is still demand for about 2,000 units that are affordable to low-income households. So I want to do a little bit of definition setting about what I mean when I say low income. Based off of federal regulations, low income is defined as a percentage of the area median income. This table just provides a high-level summary of what those numbers look like for Hendersonville. And low-income households are those who are making 80% of the area median income or below. So for a one-person household, that would be around $52,000. In a four-person household, that would be around $75,000. So if you're somewhere within that range and making that income or below, you would be considered low income and typically qualify for many housing programs provided at the state and federal level. I also wanted to find housing need and how we assess how many households are in need of housing. We look at two different things. We look at the cost of housing. So again, federal regulations say that a household or a housing unit is unaffordable if a household has to spend more than 30% of their annual income on rent, utilities, or if you're a homeowner, mortgage payments and insurance as well. But we don't just look at costs, we also look at quality. So we say a household has housing needs, even if that unit is affordable. If they are living in a unit that is poor quality or overcrowded, we would also include them in that data. Based off of the most recent data that we have, there are at least 2,000 renters and 600 homeowners who have housing needs in the city today. Again, looking at that cost and quality metric. This chart shows that number broken out between homeowners in blue and renters in orange. And what sticks out is that around 80% or over 80% of households in need are making less than the 80% of the area median income. So really, the folks who are living in unaffordable housing, the vast majority of them are low income in the city of Hendersonville. The last thing I want to touch on is really who these households are. So I talked a little bit about their incomes, but something that really came out in our stakeholder conversations was different groups that all had unique housing needs. The largest of these groups are individuals living alone who are over the age of 62. Hendersonville is an aging community and that really came out in the data for housing needs. About 825 households over the age of 62 have housing needs. 64% of these are renters. Families also showed up in the data and in stakeholder conversations. About 550 families have housing needs, 92% of which are renters. And then finally, the last group that we looked at were individuals who are younger than 62. And these tended to be folks in the service industry or in the workforce. And we spoke a lot with different employers to understand what were the housing needs of these groups. Mayor Protem, in the last meeting, you asked about disabled households. Looking at, we went back to the data and found that approximately 20%, or one in five of low-to-moderate-income households with unmet housing needs have at least one member of their household with an ambulatory disability or challenges living independently. This was higher than we would expect compared to other communities, but I think it reflects really the aging population and difficulty aging in place within the city. The last thing I'll touch on is, of course, all of these data points don't take into account the impact of the hurricane. According to state estimates, approximately 126,000 housing units in western North Carolina as a region were damaged by Hurricane Helene. Obviously, a tremendous impact to the supply of housing. More locally, as of October 21st, about 4,600 homeowners and 2,500 renters have been approved for FEMA individual assistance within ZIP codes that cover the city of Hendersonville. So again, just emphasizing that the data that we have are outdated, certainly, and I think really represents like an at-least number or conservative estimate based off of the events that happened a couple months ago.
Do we have, I think, I mean, I know that county has those numbers at this point, but the number of total losses of homes in Henderson County? We have that number? I don't know it off the top of my head. I can text my husband and he can tell me pretty quickly. Does anybody know that? It's like 476 were like total losses, I think.
Countywide.
But those were just like total loss? And then there was like another, I want to say 700 that were...
Yeah, I mean, we were up around 1,000, 1,400, somewhere between 1,000 and 1,400 that were impacted, I think. That seems to be a major damage. Major, that's what I seem to remember.
And so I assume those are probably also not in that number because this data is like very recent. I don't know if they've accomplished those assessments yet.
Yeah, we haven't seen those yet, but we're happy to kind of incorporate those numbers into what, you know, how to interpret this data, taking these new numbers into effect.
Just like a lot.
Yeah, yeah, just like a lot.
You didn't say that.
Yeah. So I wanted to pause here again on these housing priorities examples and really just open it up for any questions or discussion points or what stood out to you in speaking with folks over the past couple of months or even longer, thinking about housing needs and how we should think about those when we're looking or trying to identify sites? And what are your impressions?
I guess one of the questions that I have, maybe not just a question, but if the disabled number is as high as it was, which is actually higher than I even thought it was going to be, when we are looking at sites and areas, obviously, like we want them close to services and accessible and then like obviously density is going to be important, but then it's very expensive to build elevators and that kind of stuff in some of these low-income neighborhoods. And I guess that would be factoring in. And I assume that there are ADA requirements for how many elevators you need to have in units that have so many, you know what I mean? So that like increases the cost. And I don't know if those, are we able to get additional grant funding for... Developments?
Yeah, great, great questions. I think the, so during this part of our work, we are, our financial analysis will really be high-level. But by your points about accessibility to transit and services, those are all things that are really helping inform us, what are the types of sites that really speak to that priority? Those deeper questions about the funding sources available for disabled units, how much does do elevators and the density of those units impact cost? Those would come in a phase two in a separate scope, like further down the line. But that first part is certainly really helpful in forming, you know, this site could serve disabled households if that was a priority for the city going forward.
Do you know if any of that is part of Lytech's considerations when they're scoring projects?
Yeah, the disabled units is not part of, part of them. But I, there are other funding sources, particularly from HUD or different health funding source, health-related funding sources that are focused on disabled households. But that's something that we can bring more information to you all when we're, where are those discussion points?
I think, just looking at the options that you have on here, accessibility, I think is a huge one, especially if we're talking about, I think, prioritizing lower-income units. It seems that the data is pointing to that's really the type of unit that we need. Accessibility will be even more key because they may not have two cars in their household or, you know, someone may be walking. I don't know if I would want to prioritize families over seniors, because yes, we do have an aging population, but we need more families to move here so that we can sustain our community. I would like to see maybe something that was intergenerational, so there are our senior residents living with our younger families. There's lots of data that shows seniors and children being around each other is beneficial for both. And I think renting and owning is equivalent. Like, it would be cool if it was a property that had both renting and owning as a part of the development.
So a site, sorry, excuse me, sorry, a site large enough to support both of those?
To support both, yeah. Because I like the idea of different income levels being mixed in with each other to help form a more vibrant neighborhood.
I think kind of to follow up with that point, is there like a site minimum that y'all consider size-wise?
So not necessarily, but it does, but we, there is a minimum that we look at. No, the short answer is no. But that being said, that being said, if we were just looking at a single home, like a single lot, and if this process really is appropriate for something like that, where we're trying to identify a qualified development partner who the city could partner with to execute a project. And so typically, when we do this, they, those tend to be larger sites that can support, that's, that's large enough to attract a qualified development partner who the city would be interested in working. So, so there's not a minimum, but we, but we kind of take all these priorities to figure out what is that right size that could support these priorities?
I think density will be important for that, so we end with staying far behind. And also, I mean, I like the idea, if we had a piece of property that was underutilized, it'd be nice to start with that before we go out purchasing more property.
And that goes back to that feasibility lens, which is that the city already owns this rather than the city, the city having to go out and get an option on the property. Yep.
Is there a way that we would want to prioritize, like, so you know, there's obviously different types of low income? And you have like, just like Lytech projects, and then you also have the actual voucher projects. And I think like 52% of vouchers in North Carolina are disabled, elderly and disabled. And so since that's such a high population or percentage of kind of the needs that we're getting from your assessment, when you, when you design a project, are they able to implement both of those types of demographics in one project?
Yeah, great question. So yes, there's, there are many examples where Lytech, low-income housing tax credit and vouchers are paired together.
Okay, cool.
The, the questions are really, are those vouchers available? And Lytech is a very dependable funding source. It comes every year. Vouchers, a little bit less so, or it tends to be, varies by region. But at the, at the very end of what this process looks like, if the city owned a piece of property and then went out to solicitation and they said, we want to really prioritize developments that come back with something that looks at vouchers or has access to, or, you know, letter of interest for vouchers, that's something that the city would want to prioritize and choose. So, so that is something that we can talk more about to incorporate into the priorities.
I think we should definitely incorporate that because according to Robert, a WNC source, we have a lot of people who have qualified for vouchers, and there's nowhere in town that's taking them. So it's a shame that people have access to benefits that they cannot use.
Right, that they can use, yep.
I just want to know, is there another terminology we can use besides low income? Because it's a stigma that comes with that. It's just like when we were talking about affordable housing, we changed it to workforce that was more appealing.
Yeah, I'm using that language here because it's, it's what's used in federal regulations, it's what's used in statutes to, and it really defines who the city is allowed to serve in these projects. So I'm using that here. Of course, if there are other terms or other ways that we could describe it, I'm, of course, open to other ways to do that. But I want to be very specific about what low income means, because we hear, we hear a lot of confusion about, well, who is this unit affordable to? And so that's why all this definition setting was, you know, we used that at the beginning.
You know, and I realize that it's just, you know, I'm just saying that it's a stigma because when you say low income, they automatically, and look at people, they look like me, they think maybe living in low-income public housing, but that's not the case. So I think if we had a, you know, if we could come up with a different terminology that would apply to all individuals, not just based on your income, but your ability to have an affordable, nice, decent home. Nine times out of 10, those low-income housing are poorly constructed.
You could call it housing affordability, lower housing affordability, because their percentage would be less. We can workshop that.
Yeah, but that's something we could, we'll take into consideration when we're looking at them.
I'm so glad you're here and doing this. This is like really exciting. I think it's going to be such a great thing for our community. I'm so glad Angie Baker ventured us on this route.
We're very happy to be here and have really enjoyed working with, working with staff and with you all on this, on this topic. You know, we met many of you when you did your trip out to Chapel Hill, and it was just really great for you all to be able to see, you know, the completed project or the project that's nearly completed and that we did in Durham. So you could kind of see what the end, end result looks like.
That project was awesome.
Yeah.
That project was, I mean, I love that project. It was very appealing. It didn't specify or stigmatize anyone because all the units looked the same. Each had the same quality material. So I was very impressed with it.
I did like the multi-use that was a part of that project, too.
Yep.
I would like everything case.
All part of it.
I would like the unicorn site.
Right. Great. Well, I'll just finish off with, we'll, we'll be back early next year to present these sites and the high-level financial feasibility and recommendations around those sites. But thank you all for, for your time and for your feedback in the future.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, I may ask you as parliamentarian and the city attorney, we have a number of public hearings, but we also have some younger citizens who I believe are here more interested in the item E about Brooklyn Town Homes and some other, we have a number of citizens that I think are here, and that's after some staff presentations, didn't want to miss the opportunity to see that they get moved up a little bit before we were going into the hall of the public, just make that suggestion. So I don't know.
Move E to X.
That is, you're prerogative as a council, but I think there are a number of citizens here.
I think they have waited very long, and I would tend to agree, the pleas on their faces, please let them.
Is, is there any objection to changing the agenda and moving item E up? Hearing none? All right, we can move right on to debris zoning. This is the.
I apologize to the staff for catching our mouth guards.
Right.
Not to thank you for that. Yes, we have a CCD for your consideration this evening for Brooklyn Avenue Town Homes. This is a three parcel project, total 6.33 acres. The project is proposing a 60-unit townhome development. That comes out to a density of nine and a half units per acre. The property is currently zoned R15 in the ETJ, and the applicant is proposing urban residential conditional zoning district for this project. The future land use designation from the Gen H plan is multi-generational living, MGL. There was a neighborhood compatibility held, a meeting held in August. I will point out that this project initially came in early 2023, and then NCM was held then, but then the project didn't move forward at that time. So this was actually the second NCM. But for this one, there was about eight units, eight residents there in person, and there were a number of questions and a good amount of discussion that happened, but I would say that the, the number one concerns that were heard were really related to the traffic, potential traffic impacts and just the impacts of the development on adjacent properties. So taking a look at the site, upper left is standing on Old Spartanburg Road, looking at the intersection with Brooklyn Avenue. There's a stand of bamboo at that corner. That'll come up again later in the presentation. Upper right is looking east along Brooklyn Avenue. The subject property is off on the left. The bottom left photo shows some of the existing structures. This was a former mobile home park on the site, did have some single-family homes, still has some as well, one of which is still occupied. The bottom right photo is at the northeast corner. It is heavily vegetated, and so this is an example of that. So impact from Helene, from what I was able to gather revisiting the site, there was some tree loss and, you know, like everywhere, oaks, the oaks, the oaks fell. And the, most of what I saw was that it was in areas that on the site plan were already proposed for removal and that the areas that were proposed for preservation, tree canopy preservation, looked pretty well intact. So like a number of us, this may have been somewhat fortunate despite the tree loss. These next slides, oh, that didn't work. We'll have to do some, some magic if, if we need to see these, but there's, these are two photos that as we get into discussing the conditions, could be relevant. So one of the conditions that you'll hear about is related to removing that bamboo stand, but also making sure there's language in there that would preserve the other existing vegetation that's there. The upper right photo, you can barely see it, but that is, the photo is taken from the property line, looking at a neighboring property, and you can see how close the property is. And you're going to see how that relates to the site plan and a condition that relates to that. So you can see it's, it's very close to the property edge. So taking a look at the site plan, as I mentioned, 60 units, nine and a half units per acre. There are nine structures proposed, a total footprint of 63,440 square feet. That's just a little over 1,000 square feet per unit with a max height of 35 feet. There is roughly 87,000 square feet of open space, including 50,800 square feet of Tier One tree canopy preservation proposed. They would also, you know, have an option to do the Tier Two, additional 10% of tree preservation or plant and offset any Tier Two trees that are removed. There is 30,106 square feet of common open space, and a similar amount of parkland has been shown as dedicated on the plans. There are two access points from Brooklyn Avenue. The trip generation numbers, the AM, PM peak trips were roughly right around 30 trips, 29 and 34 for both AM and PM. The daily trips are estimated to be at 432 daily trips. You may recall that our, our thresholds for requiring a TIA are either 100 peak hour trips or over 1,000 daily trips. The internal streets are provided. There is a stubout proposed to an adjacent property, the right-of-way, it's kind of hard to see, but the right-of-way extends all the way to the east. There is sidewalk shown on one side of internal streets. The zoning code for urban residential requires sidewalks on both sides and that it be seven feet wide. They're proposing one side and five-foot wide sidewalk, and they've got a condition to, to, to grant them relief. The site plan shows 130 parking spaces. Only 60 spaces are required. For landscaping, the development would be required, or will be required to plant street trees, common space plantings, and as I mentioned, any Tier Two plantings that may be required if they remove any of that additional 10%. The development is required to plant or use credits for open space plantings, buffer plantings, vehicular use area plantings, common open space plantings, and street trees according to Article 15. They cannot use tree credits for the street trees required under Article, or Section 525. Little, little in the weeds, but there will be a detailed landscaping plan provided at final site plan. There were some outstanding comments the staff had. I'll highlight some of those. The building elevations lacked the specification of detail that we need to be able to determine if they're compliant with the design standards. There's a loading zone proposed that's in the right-of-way. There's been some discussion with the fire marshal on that, to make sure they're okay with that. Going into planning board, that was unresolved. The code calls for bulb outs in crosswalks at intersections. Those are not shown. Pedestrian walkways are required to each of the front entrances of each unit. On-street parking is required where it can be provided. Some of the details related to the, the use of the common space are needed. Mentioned the tree credits for certain plantings. Street trees are required on all internal and external streets, so they're, they're showing them on Brooklyn Avenue, but not the internal streets. And they asked for a waiver of the parkland dedication fee, and we cannot do that. That comes from the subdivision ordinance, can't waive standards from subdivision ordinance as part of a conditional zoning process. Taking a look at the elevations, there are shown to be two stories on the Brooklyn Avenue frontage, which you're seeing now. They have front-facing entrances that face towards the street. On the internal units, they have protruding front-facing garages with the entrances recessed. And all the units would have gabled roofs. Elevations for all sides were not provided, nor were details related to dimensions or specific materials they may use. So looking at the six criteria for considering a rezoning, the Gen H plan designates the subject property as MGL, multi-generational living. Most of the surrounding properties, including frontage along Brooklyn Avenue and nearby blocks to the east, are also designated as MGL. The site is also adjacent to a mixed-use employment area. Across Old Spartanburg Road, the character areas are neighborhood center and mixed-use employment. The character area description for multi-generational living includes the following. This area is characterized by mixed residential development and a limited amount of small-scale neighborhood serving commercial. It's comprised of a variety of homes, mixing detached and attached, townhomes and duplexes with a lesser amount of multifamily units. The combination of housing types are intended to create intergenerational neighborhoods. Improved open spaces in the forms of greens, pocket parks, and neighborhood parks are interspersed. Lot sizes are similar to those in the family neighborhood living, but with increased densities. Continuing our review of comp plan consistency, we, staff finds that it is generally consistent with the future land use and conservation map, that character area description I just read, and the zoning crosswalk. Additionally, the density and scale of the proposed project align with the focus area. You may recall, we had five focus areas where we did a little more of a deep dive in the comp plan and had some renderings. What is shown is, aligns with the focus area along Spartanburg Highway that's in the comp What is shown is, aligns with the focus area along Spartanburg Highway that's in the comp plan. So taking a look at the second criteria for compatibility, we start by reviewing the current land use and zoning map. I've mentioned the ETJ and the R15 zoning. It's made up of three parcels that were formerly the home of a mobile home park. The remainder of the properties fronting Brooklyn Avenue east of Old Spartanburg Road are zoned R15 and feature single-family homes. Adjacent to the rear of the site is an apartment complex, zoned PRD. There are two, two-story structures featuring 80 units on 8.36 acres. That comes out to a density of nine and a half units per acre, same as what is proposed. Across Old Spartanburg Road from the site is C3 and C3 special use districts, which is highway business zoning. The site is 750 feet from the intersection of Spartanburg Highway and Brooklyn Avenue. Staff finds that the general location of the project and its proximity to a mix of land uses is compatible with the city's overall growth strategies. The only area of inconsistency arises when considering guiding principles for compact development and sense of place as it pertains to the specific design of those interior units with the front-facing garages and recessed front entries. The change, the third criteria is changed conditions. The subject property, as I mentioned, formerly the site of the mobile home park, no longer is a vacant property now. In terms of public interest, the proposed development provides additional opportunities for owner-occupied housing, and is clustered in order to limit impacts on the environmentally sensitive areas that are on this site. There are some wetlands on the site. In terms of public facilities, if the site is developed, it will be served by City Hendersonville Services. Brooklyn Avenue is an NC DOT road designated as a local street in the comprehensive transportation plan. Old Spartanburg is an NC DOT street designated as a minor thoroughfare in that plan. The site is one block from a major thoroughfare, which is Spartanburg Highway. The effect on the natural environment, 90% of the site, pre-Halleen, covered with tree canopy. The applicant proposes to meet the new tree preservation requirements by preserving at least a minimum of 20% of the site's tree canopy. So the planning board considered this at their November meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval, but they tacked on five additional conditions. And so we'll go through those here shortly. But they did put forth these rationale for approval, and staff drafted some rationale for denial as well. So taking a look at the conditions, these three conditions were, are on the current site plan. And so they were part of the recommended approval from planning board. They were supported by staff. The second one is actually may be a moot point, depending on the text amendment that's coming up. It includes addressing that one. So staff was supportive of waiving the TIA and reducing the sidewalks to one side on those internal streets in a five-foot width. The planning board proposed these five additional items, removing the bamboo stand that was talked about and mentioning that the other vegetation would be preserved, that the Mayberry name, which is a former property owner, that that name remain, or is utilized in the naming of the streets for the project. They proposed a Type A buffer, and I'll get into some details on that for where the site would be adjacent to single-family homes. There was some discussion at planning board about staff coming up with some resolution to some, to a specific issue, which I'll highlight. And so there's an amendment proposed in there as well that in lieu of a Type A buffer at the portion of the property boundary where the street stub is located, a privacy fence shall be constructed across the width of the right-of-way, and a sign shall be placed on the fence with states' future road connection, which is required by subdivision ordinance. Number four, that they delineate on-street parking in a manner which meets the public works standards, and that they would recess the garages to ensure that there's enough parking space so you don't end up with obstructions on the sidewalk. So real quick, I'm going to highlight condition three. So I have shown here, the green boundary is where a Type A buffer, as it's written by the planning board, would be required along the rear and sides of these properties, but also along this entire strip, which is a pretty hefty length, and a good portion of that is already heavily vegetated. So the developer's going to counter that that not be required. The main thing that we want, the impetus in large part for this buffer discussion was about the impact to 1014 Brooklyn Avenue, which is circled in blue. So the idea being that cars that are traveling east along this new street, at night, their headlights are going to be shining towards this house. And so as long as that house is there, and until some other future street connection is made at that location, a privacy fence would be put in place, and that would help block those headlights and limit some of the impacts of the development. I think that's the number-one goal of that condition.
Can you explain that one more time?
I'm sorry, can you explain that one more time?
Yeah, so the house is located, so this was that picture that I couldn't show earlier, but this house right here, if you're traveling down this street and you're going east at night and you have your headlights on, they're basically would be shining right into this house. And so putting a privacy fence across, at this property boundary, across the right-of-way width would help keep that at bay, those headlights.
Instead of putting the vegetated button.
Instead of the vegetated button.
Because that's the side of the house, right?
That is the side of the house, yeah. Yeah, their driveway is basically right, it's on, it's right here. It's right here on the property edge.
So the vegetation is being moved and just a fence, but why can't they have both?
Well, you would just put in a fence instead of vegetation. And part of my thinking with that is if you plant it and put a fence in place, and then there's a future road connection, you'd be having to rip out the plants. And it could, we don't necessarily want to put in place anything that could be a deterrent to making that future road connection. If it's our intent for that to connect at some point in the future, and there's trees that have grown up and nobody wants to remove the trees, that's going to make it harder to make that connection. The fence coming down seems a little bit easier to me to, when that time comes.
Expand on future road connection, when we find it.
Yeah, so the subdivision ordinance requires that when there's adjacent land that has some developability, that a new development, a new subdivision, would create a street stubout for a future connection to that land. So over time, this parcel, the parcel beside it, and the parcels that continue down to Gilbert Street, you may have, you know, someone sell their property, and maybe someone consolidates multiple properties together. This was three parcels, and they look to do maybe a similar product, and they're continuing a row of townhouses that front Brooklyn Avenue. This would be where they get their access. And that would eliminate having multiple curb cuts coming off of Brooklyn Avenue. They could get their, and that's what this project does as well. Instead of all those townhomes that are on Brooklyn, instead of each single one of them having driveways coming off of Brooklyn Avenue, 15 driveways, there's two, two access points instead of 15. That is a great reduction in conflict points. And so that brings that, that access into the site and off the major road. Sorry, I went on, I went on this side. I'm sorry.
How tall does the privacy fence have to be?
That would be good to stipulate, you know, I think an eight-foot fence would be sufficient. You may want to hear from the neighbor and see what they'd be comfortable with. Anything above eight feet would require stamp engineering for the building code. So stay below that requirement, otherwise they wouldn't need a permit of any sort. But if it goes over, if it starts getting too tall, you got to start having it engineered. So stay below eight. So I wanted to visualize that for you. The developer has presented some counter proposals to those five planning board. They discussed it planning board, so they've prepared what they're willing to do. And so those are presented on the screen, and the developers prepared to discuss those. Okay, great, so I will skip that. I also have our staff recommendation that, so you have the planning board's conditions, you have the developer's counter language, and then I have staff's analysis of whether, you know, we think it needs to be tweaked a little bit, if staff agrees with it, get a note for discussion needed for each one of these. So I can, I can make, as we get into this, I can provide more detail on what we may recommend, and just point out some, maybe some key details as needed. And the only other one thing I'll add is that it came up at planning board that the street trees proposed on Brooklyn didn't meet our standard. They meet DOT standard, but they don't meet ours, so they would need a condition. That condition has now been proposed. It hadn't been, it wasn't included in the site plan that went to planning board. It was discussed at planning board. And so I do want to highlight that because the staff is agreeable because we want to work with NC DOT, make sure they're happy, and this condition would satisfy that. So we're agreeable to that. But it was not on the site plan that went to planning board, so we just want to highlight that. And I'll get into other details as needed as we get into that discussion. Any other, any questions for staff?
Would the developer like to make a presentation?
Thank you all. Been a lot of clapping for staff. Echo that. Enjoyed working with Matt and Sam and Lou and Tyler. They've been great, Tom Wooton as well. I've got, I don't know if we have that.
All right, just take me a moment.
Take a second. Sure. Matt does a good job framing up the projects pretty well. Kind of saves me duplicating a lot of it, so that I appreciate. He talked about the consistency with the Gen H plan and kind of talked about some of the bullet points that it's consistent with. I was going to show those here in just a moment so you could see them.
Bear with me, sorry everybody. Matt, is it MPG?
Yes. So Matt kind of went through this with his presentation, talked about future land use and most suitable, least suitable, and kind of see where the, where the property is located in town. And then, and obviously, it's been categorized as most suitable for residential land use. Further, it's for the multi-generational living, kind of in that swath coming out of south of downtown. And then, you know, this is the recommended zoning for those, for that classification. So the UR and the UV is kind of what Matt and I have been discussing for better part of three years probably now, two, at least, at least two years. And so that's kind of where, how we've gotten to where we are. And then further, you mentioned the renderings in the, in the comp plan. This is that Spartanburg Highway focus area. See the kind of ultra-high-density development that is proposed here in the future. The star is where, where the, the subject property is. Of course, you've got some townhomes that are proposed right here on the, on the rendering. Seems consistent with, with what we're trying to do. This is another, another view of what's in the comprehensive plan. So the property is a little over six acres, a little oddly shaped. It's got some topography that starts up at the road and falls back pretty good, back to the back corner. There's three wetland areas back there. Two of them, these two are what you call, they're categorized as scrub wetlands. They hold water after it rains. And then, and then this here is the, is the kind of remnants of the Blue Line stream that you can see on the, on the county GIS, the city GIS. At one point, I think there maybe was one that ran kind of here, and has since been displaced or moved, probably from the apartment community. But, but now, you know, that, that is a protected waterway that we're staying away from, and we're leaving these two others. These, these two are not protected waterways, but we're not going to mess with them as part of the preservation area. So we're, what you would kind of typically call, it's not called this in the city of Hendersonville, but generally speaking, this would be kind of categorized as a, as a cluster development, where you try and cluster all of your development activities kind of in one area of the site so you can leave a larger portion untouched, and that's what we've tried to do here. So we're, you know, again, Matt did a, did a great job framing up what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish, and this is, and he also mentioned a couple of comments that we, we tried to address and resubmit that, that didn't make their way onto the site plan that, that you just saw. And this is kind of what we, what we resubmitted, and Matt was gracious enough to let us move forward with our previous site plan, but also introduce a couple of new things that, that move us in the direction of compliance, is the way that he worded it, and I liked that very much. So this is, this is what we're moving forward with, or what we're, what we're attempting to move forward with. I was going to move into the, the conditions unless y'all had questions about the development in general. Got it. So what I, what I've tried to do here is do a side-by-side of what came out of Planning Commission, and then what our proposal is. You know, we're, we're agreeable to removing all the bamboo at the corner. It's not a problem. All of, all of that area is covered in canopy as for the tree canopy coverage map. So we're, we're just asking that we don't have to go back and recalculate all of our tree canopy coverage area as it relates to moving the, removing the bamboo. So that, that was our counter proposal. Need questions about that? Mayberry name, we're reusing the Mayberry name in, in three areas. Think this is a controversial change. The Type, Type A buffer, the, what we've got up here is, is what Matt already, already talked about. We're proposing putting a fence across the, across the road. This is a zoom, zoomed up, a close-up of, of that area. Ms. Chael's house is approximately here, about 60 feet away from the edge of that road. From the edge of the road, but from the property line. She's, she's correct. If we just put a, a buffer down here, like where the property line is, is about nine feet below where the end of the road is going to be. So like, the buffer's not going to do anything for her with the headlights. So the fence really is the proper solution for that issue. I think that that makes the most sense. Our only change to, to that was not going across the, the entire length of the right-of-way. One of, there's another requirement that we provide access to open space, and that sidewalk connects to the open space. So that, that was the reasoning for the small change. We can go across the right-of-way. I don't have a problem, but we do need to have a consideration for that.
I'll address each of these after you're done.
Okay. All right. Perfect. All right. This condition number four is relative to the on-street parking. What I've, what I've included in here is, is the actual requirement for on-street parking. You know, that I think, I think design is looking for parallel parking spaces kind of throughout the development. And with the nature of a townhome development, you've got driveways kind of all over the place. There's not really a place to do a parallel parking space. We have a couple of opportunities, but they, they get close to the stop signs, which causes a conflict with the Public Works comment. There are distance requirements from parking away from stop signs. So in, in my interpretation of the, of the zoning code, on-street parking is only required in, in council's discretion. Alternatively, we can provide off, off, on-street parking, but we're providing it in perpendicular form and not angled or parallel. So feel like there's two ways around that issue. And most practically, like, we put the parking spaces near the mail kiosk. That's what we're proposing. And finally, the recessed garages. The, the, the actual issue here was, was keeping, keeping cars out of the sidewalks in front, which, which we agree with. And, and we can, we can design the, the driveways long enough to do that. What we disagreed with was the building design requirement to achieve that. So, I mean, we can, we can have a protruding garage and also build a driveway that's long enough. So we'd, we'd like to, there's already parking space requirements, like minimum guidelines that are, that are in the zoning code, and we're proposing to, to meet those with, with that issue instead of prescribing a recessed garage.
Can you explain how you're able to automate that?
By building a longer driveway.
Okay. So are you just pushing the entire unit back?
A little bit, yeah. Yeah. So there'd be some, so like the, the, the requirement, we're, we're, we're going to build a 20 to 21-foot-long driveway. That's what, that's what we're going to build. And so there's going to be, there's going to be some that are slightly longer. I can go to, like, the requirement is 18 feet, but, but they have to stay out of the sidewalk. That's the key. You know, the longest, you know, your full-size truck is 19 feet long. So like, in a lot of places, a parking stall needs to be 20 feet long. That's, that's just, that's the minimum standard in a lot of other places. In the city, it's 18 feet. A full-size truck is 19 feet long. So in order to accommodate your longest truck that somebody's going to have, you need a 20-foot space. And that's what we're going to build. If I can get to, get to my site plan. Here, right here, you can see that the, the, each unit is, is staggered. So, you know, on the shortest unit, you're going to have one that's slightly longer. But the short, the shorter unit, you're going to have 20 feet from the, from the base of the building to the sidewalk in order to fit the longest car somebody would have.
Is that too, like, if you're on the street side, is that 20 feet to the front of the sidewalk on the house side, or is that 20 feet to the middle of the sidewalk, or?
No, that's like 20 feet to the, to the inside edge of the sidewalk. So, so like, you're going to be, so this is, this is the short side because this one's sticking out.
Yeah.
Your 20 feet is going to be from here, the inside edge of the sidewalk, to there. And this one would be 22 feet. Any other questions on the driveways? The next, the next two conditions are ones that Matt mentioned that were either discussed or ones, ones new. Is, we've got, we've got a conflicting requirement on Brooklyn Avenue, which is a DOT road. The city's medium tree is categorized by NC DOT as a large tree. So, so what we're, what we're proposing, instead of the mix between large and small trees because of, because of our, our distance off the road, we're proposing to just do all medium trees instead of large and small. So that, that it came up in, in Planning Commission, and we showed it on the plan, but the specific condition did not make it onto the plan. So be clear about that. And, and that's what we're, we're proposing. I think it's a beautiful tree. The, the last condition that we're proposing is one that, that, that didn't make it onto the plan, and Matt directed me to include it in here because it is moving in the direction of, in the direction of compliance. And we, we, we did not show any street trees on the interior because at, at the time, we thought that we would, we could use tree credits from all of the preservation. We have heritage trees and, and things like this. Turns out that that, that is not the case. And our last, our last submittal was like the Wednesday before the storm, and communication went silent. Anyway, we, we have updated our, our tree plan, our landscape plan, on the interior trees. And the, the interior streets have the same requirement as the DOT street. One every, one large tree every 40 feet, one small tree every 30 feet. And what, what we are proposing here is essentially one small tree in each one of these spaces. And, and we can, we can get into detail on measurements and what's actual planting area. But we've got, we've got 1,400 feet of street frontage in, in, inside the development. About 280 feet we can't plant in because of radius restrictions, we've stayed 35 feet away from them. And then 600 feet is concrete driveways. So the plantable area on the interior of the street is actually like 500 feet, which I think needs to be taken into consideration better. But we are, we are proposing to plant one small tree in each space that we have available. And then, and then we've added some, some large trees in other areas. And that's what we're proposing to build. I think, I think those are beautiful trees, too. Anyway, those are, those are our conditions, and that's the site plan. You can see all the trees on the interior of, of the site as well. Those are, those are the conditions that we're proposing, or alternatives to, to what was approved in Planning Commission, and happy to continue to talk to y'all about it if you have more questions.
If I go through and kind of highlight some of the comments I would have, that's not, can you pull his, that developer presentation back up? If you want to. I don't need you here, but you, but you can get called back up whenever they're ready. This may take me a couple minutes. So for the first one, staff just wanted to highlight that there is some existing mature vegetation, and so we would, you know, developers proposing to remove the bamboo stand at, at or near the corner, at, in near the corner of Old Sparkburg Road and Brooklyn Avenue. The removal of the bamboo canopy shall not adversely affect the canopy preservation calculations. If we were to accept that as a condition, I think we would want to amend it to say that existing hardwood and evergreen trees intermixed within the bamboo, intermixed and adjacent to the bamboo area, shall be preserved. If existing trees are removed, the tree canopy preservation calculations shall be updated accordingly. Does that track?
So if he's only removing bamboo, we're not recalculating anything. If we start removing other things that are not bamboo, we are recalculating.
Yes. That's what I'm proposing as an amendment.
We're going to have to...
I have it written down here. Whoever goes for the motion, I've got some language. Fine with number two. Number three is... So this was the one, we had said that a fence across the entire width of the right-of-way. Developer pointed out that there's a sidewalk connection there. Only thing I would say is that the fence should run from the edge of pavement on the north side to the edge of the right-of-way on the south side. Because there's no sidewalk on the south side. And the way the house sits, the neighboring house is, is ju, is down here a little bit. So as those four driveways, as cars are headed east and turning right into these driveways, those lights are going to start, you know, angling this way. So if there's a longer fence, it gives them a little more protection. So that's, that's nuancedy. What's that? It's a 45-foot right-of-way.
And we've not heard from the public yet, so.
Good point.
We've not heard the concerns from the neighbors yet.
Sure. This is all based on.
So pause.
Planning board.
So before, you may have to come back and just, because this seems to be the point of contention.
Yeah. Good, good, fair point. On-street parking is required for the urban residential codes. I just want to point that out. If there are opportunities to, where there, it's outside of the distance required by Public Works from the intersection, and there's no driveways, we would want to see on-street parking placed there because that's what the code requires, so that's the standard. What the developer is proposing here is a relaxation of the standards if, if you were to agree to it as, as presented. The recessed garage is, is, is kind of a tricky one because if they, it would, it would have a very big impact on their site plan to recess them, but staff also feels that it would result in a better design ultimately. So that's really a judgment call. I talked about this one already. Staff is agreeable to the condition six related to Brooklyn Avenue, street trees. Condition seven, y'all were made aware, the staff was presented with an updated site plan with a number of changes between Planning Board and City Council. Staff advised the developer that, that amount of change would be inappropriate between those two, these two meetings, and that it needed to focus on responding to what the discussion was and the conditions that were presented by the planning board. And that if there were any changes or proposed conditions that were going to relax meeting the standards in, in a way that was new and different from what had been previously talked about through this entire process, that staff would get up here and say, that needs to go back to Planning Board to be considered because that's, that's new and hadn't been considered yet. And I did comment that if something in the site plan went from not meeting our standard to moving in the direction of meeting our standard, that we may, we may consider addressing that. And that is the case here with this condition, is the proposal, as, as shown or, you know, illustrated by the developer, it is very tight spacing. I, I think our code doesn't necessarily account for a tight townhome development with this many driveways and trying to meet those street tree requirements. So I think that it is a fair proposal to plant smaller trees. I don't think it's a attempt to save money or anything like that. I think it's to make, make it, make it fit and make it work. So, and it, going from no street trees shown on the internal streets to having small street trees is moving towards compliance. So I will leave it at that. Keep moving forward.
All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
I will again ask people to come to the front and give their name and address for the clerk's record, and considering the, the time, try to make your comments as brief as possible. I think everyone would appreciate that. First is Ken Fitch.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. This project would replace a pre-existing multi-unit mobile home park and its now abandoned elements, but with a greater density of units and an expansion beyond the mobile home park site into the existing single-family neighborhood, creating a situation where issues of compatibility become important considerations to ensure the high quality of life of all involved, and this deserves your thoughtful consideration. Neighbors and others have raised some serious concerns, including traffic impact, neighborhood compatibility, and deforestation, and they may bring that to you tonight. There are two issues that I would bring to your attention. The site plan presents an awkward situation with the interior east-west street parallel to Brooklyn Avenue. This will be a public street and parking on one side. This new public street terminates with dead ends and no turnarounds at both ends of the street. Terminates dead ends at both ends of the street and no turnarounds. And it's, and its alignment as we, its alignment, as we have heard, aims directly at the adjacent properties. So the example is at night, light from vehicles would shine directly onto the adjacent property. So buffering becomes a very important issue. In the version of the site plan that was presented to the planning board, there was no buffering present. I mean, at that point, I suggested a type C buffer, which includes trees, shrubs, a berm and a fence that would provide an effective buffer. It would have to be amended because of the size. But this is important, especially for the property on the eastern boundary, as we've seen in the photo that you have in your packet. We haven't seen it tonight, where the property line is right at the edge of the driveway, and the existing trees in that photo are subject to removal. Now, the planning board recommended the type A buffer as a condition, as you've heard. But in the site plan before you, there is instead just a fence. But it's only, now the question is extending the width of the street or the right-of-way. But it's still just that limited area. But also, it contains, this fence contains a sign prominently attached to that that's proclaiming "Future Road Connection." Now, this very prominent public proclamation of "Future Road Connection," posted for all the world to see, would certainly seem ominous. posted for all the world to see would certainly seem ominous for adjacent properties. So my question, will these properties be subject to condemnation or eminent domain proceedings? Probably not. But this public designation effectively projects a condemnation of the integrity and existing character of the adjacent property and compromises and depletes its value. Because it is forever proclaimed "Future Road Connection." All this seems somewhat at odd with the purpose and intent of buffering, screening, and landscaping in the zoning ordinance, which states, quote, "Provide a transition between dissimilar land uses to protect abutting properties from neighborhood development and preserve the character and value of the property and provide a sense of privacy," end quote. The proposed "Future Road Connection" posting is frightening for adjacent residents seeking to remain in their homes and enjoy a high quality of life. But it has impact for townhome residents also. As the "Future Road Connection" sign signals the future arrival of cut-through traffic twenty-four-seven, driving through the neighborhood. And that is certainly a devaluation of their property and the character of their neighborhood, where vibrant neighborhood quickly becomes a vibrating neighborhood. This shifts quickly to the other issues of concern. Where would this cut-through traffic go? To the Brooklyn Avenue exits for which there have been some concerns? Or straight through to Old Spartanburg Road? They're going through that clothesline on the neighbor's property, but creating another entry onto Old Spartanburg Road. And that's only a few car lengths or two from the four-stop intersection that you've seen in the photo. This all becomes something of a mess. But this is conditional zoning, and you can bring a remedy to the situation with conditions or adjustments. First, please remove the "Future Road Connection" sign. The notion of connectivity that underlies the plan here seems inappropriate for this specific location. Second, I would say add a modified type C buffer, that includes shrubs, trees, and perhaps a berm and a fence. But have the fence, this, this buffer extend to be coordinated with the footprint of the buildings that are gonna be put there? So this would retain some individual integrity and compatibility and bring to the current and future residents security, privacy, and peace. Thank you.
Lauren, is it Chael?
Chael. All right, I'm nervous, I'm not good at this, so. All right. So first off, I want to say the picture they showed of our house was a little misleading as they were behind a tree. There are absolutely no trees of ours between their property and our house. It is thirty-five feet the width of our driveway. So that sounds like they're gonna start building twenty-five feet from that. So that's sixty feet from our driveway. They're gonna have heavy construction to start building townhouses. My mother's retired, this is supposed to be her quiet years. My daughters go to school, they don't wanna deal with this every day. This is gonna have a large impact between the construction and the traffic. And they will say, we don't meet the requirements. This is also a quarter-mile-long street. This will take up three, two-thirds of one side. This isn't coming into the neighborhood. This is taking over the neighborhood. The rest of the street are houses with yards, trees, nice, which we lost a good deal of during Halleen. And you're about to tear the rest of it down. They were told at the first meeting, they wanted to get rid of the, um, bamboo. It's like they forgot so they could say that was part of their twenty percent and not save as much. And I understand the need for more housing, but this will ruin us. This is not how we wanted to live. We didn't move into row houses. This is not compatible. It's nothing like the other houses on that street. If it was a neighborhood you drove into and that was what the neighborhood was like, that's one thing. That's not what this is. This is something that is taking up a third of the quarter-mile street that this is on. This is sixty feet from our living room, from my mother's bedroom. This is heavy construction and noise constantly. I also don't understand what the need for pink trees is. This is North Carolina, it's green. I do feel like that sign is telling us, they're, they're not even wanting to plant things to give us privacy because they wanna put a sign, they wanna run us out. They're worried about when they run us out and how it's gonna tear it down. They said that. Like, how are we supposed to feel about that? Like, the fence that at least covered the sides of the houses. We don't wanna walk out and look at houses. We had been walking out and looking at trees. Now, most of the trees in front of us were tore down by Halleen, and they're about to tear down all the ones on one side. That is really upsetting. Uh, it's, it's, row houses are city things. Like, this is not downtown. These are townhouses, is another word for row houses. I'm sorry. And like I said, the concern with traffic, I spoke with several people, actually walked around and knocked on doors. There are several elderly people, one who was on oxygen, can't make meetings, but she was concerned about light coming into her, her house because she's right across the street from this row of houses. And there was at least three people I talked to who were concerned about traffic. Because I said, quarter-mile road with stop signs on both ends, one being a rather large one at, um, Old Spartanburg Highway. It is a tiny buffer they're, they're proposing between us and this big neighborhood. I mean, a smallest fence they can come up with minimum standards, and they don't wanna put trees because they're more worried about what it's gonna be like when they run us out and have to tear it out. And I don't wanna live in this neighborhood they're partying, putting in. And when they keep saying closer to compliance, that means it's not compliant.
Please, Chael. Martha Chael.
I don't have very much to say. I don't really like to talk in public, but, um, I'd like, like she said, I retired here. I didn't, I would've moved into the city, you know? But, I mean, it feels like this is gonna happen. Can they at least put a fence so that we can't see them constructing this? Like, a big enough fence to hide our house? I mean, if that's the minimum I can get, that would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Chael. Natalie Rice.
Hello, my name is Natalie Rice, and I also live on ten fourteen Brooklyn Avenue, right next to the proposed townhouses. And as a, as a fourteen-year-old, the effects will heavily impact my home and the rest of my high school years. With construction, traffic, environmental changes, and other disturbances, my life will be greatly changed. To start, today I was stuck in traffic caused by the construction of homes on one ninety-one near Mills River that made my trip home, trip from home, trip home from school over an hour. If construction like this, especially with the addition of sidewalks, is going on near my house, it will likely make getting to school on time much more difficult. A few months of construction may seem brief, but the estimated four hundred-plus cars being poured onto Brooklyn Avenue through only two driveways will mean a long time straight. I know this usually doesn't warrant a traffic impact analysis, but it greatly concerns me. I'm also worried about the price of these homes. Townhomes are going for between three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. Though I'm not an expert, I don't know if these homes are going to be accessible for those who really need them. Lastly, I'm aware that there are good conservation efforts occurring, but seventy percent of the forest coverage will be removed already. And while I understand that bamboo, bamboo is doing more harm than good, I think it's unfair to still count, count the removed bamboo as preserved environment. Since I live right next to the site, my family and I will bear the brunt of these disturbances. And avoiding proper barriers to plan for future road connection into where I live seems incredibly rude. We have spoken to other neighbors who share the same views on the development. The townhomes are going to greatly transform my final childhood years and, in my eyes, not for the better. For me, the harms will far outweigh the benefits and disturb my daily life. I know some things must be done in the sake of progress, I just hope this isn't one of them.
Lynn Williams?
All right, Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. Great job, Natalie. Good job. So, yeah, I wanna start with, you know, expressing that the neighbors are in opposition. You heard both Lauren and Martha Chael, Chael?
Chael.
Chael. Um, and then Ms. Rice. Thank you so much for coming today to speak up. The only people that I've heard in favor of this project are the person that owns the land and then the current tenant of the person that owns the land. So that's the only people I've heard that, in the neighborhood, that want this project. After Halleen, we can clearly see, um, that we have a flooding problem here in the county. This property is covered with canopy and sensitive wetlands that work into the overall site ecosystem and is part of a critical green infrastructure corridor. And currently, the site is ninety-five percent covered with tree canopy, and it's proposed to be reduced to twenty-five with plantings included. That's just not gonna be good enough. Um, I mean, even, um, I heard Chief My Hand just joked, we were on an island two months ago. So for us that couldn't get downtown, you know, it's, it's more than just a joke. We're literally scared. So, you know, when the next flood is going to happen, this is very real for us. And you can probably ask your friends and neighbors, and they know people who have died because of it. So it's, it's very serious. Let's see. Let's see. So the, the surrounding area is mostly single-family homes. Currently, the site is also R fifteen. The comp plan is advisory, so it, it's not required. You can make a, an educated decision for yourself, what's best for the community. Where else do you see this close of a setback abutting a street? I can think of Main Street and Seventh Avenue. This is way far out from both of those locations. I also saw a long Merriman, Merriman just outside of the city center of Asheville. So that's also a whole different vibe. You know, this is little old Brooklyn Avenue off Old Spartanburg Highway, it's not Asheville. I'm hearing the max height is thirty-five feet with a hundred thirty parking spaces, okay? If people are parked on the internal streets, how are the fire trucks even gonna get through? Are the EMS, if they're parked on both sides? Let's see. This particular density, what I heard was it's nine and a half approximately units per acre. Supposedly, it's similar to the property next door, which is the apartments. But actually, if you look at the design, it's completely different. The property next door that has the apartments, they're all compact into the center. And there's large setbacks from the road and from, uh, in between the other neighbors. So, yeah, it might be the same density, but the design completely disrupts the privacy and, um, it's, has a totally different function. And I think that's very important. So this density is designed in a particular way that will encroach on the neighbors' rights to privacy and will completely destroy the tree-lined character of this quiet side street and neighborhood. Also, there's not gonna be a TIA, and the neighbors have been asking for that, so we can plan for better traffic management. And there's a need for denser buffers to reduce the impacts. Another concern is the parkland designate, parkland designation. I'm not clear whether or not parkland's gonna be designated here. It sounds like maybe it's not going to be because it doesn't comply with what the city would want and as far as policing and oversight. So I'm thinking, okay, we have this ordinance for parkland designation. There's this property that's gonna be on there that's parkland, but it's actually not gonna be designated. And then there's a public street that leads to it, so can the public go to it? And then if so, where do we park? Because there's not gonna be much parking. And so I, I saw the developer was asking to waive the fee in lieu of, for the public park space, but if there's no designated public park space, I'm not sure how that works. It's supposed to be thirty thousand square feet. That's a lot of public park space that you've promised to our community with the displacement of everything else on site. You know, the best example I have is at twelve oh-two Greevo Highway, where this council approved five acres of mature forest decimated on a six-acre site. And now the trees sit fallen like massive bones in a graveyard. And it still sits there in ruin. And it caused havoc on the neighbors with the sound of all the trees falling. And there's no public park space there for us that was promised. Let's see. Another example, the three oh-three Chadwick single-family home development right next door to our house, which brought me into this whole development world. On a normal day, they have thirteen cars parked at their single-family home. Have you noticed that? Thirteen cars next to our house now, at one of those homes. So we can say it's gonna be one car, two cars. But in my personal reality, we're dealing with thirteen cars parked next door to us every day. And there's no regulation of that. So I think that's a real-life example. Another concern was that the urban village ordinance and the lot frontage ordinance, we're traditionally, we're going to, originally, we're going to be approved prior to this public hearing. So my understanding is that this property doesn't fit into these ordinances yet because it hasn't been approved. Maybe I'm wrong on that. Let's see. And then the, the issue about the type A buffer versus the privacy fence, I mean, what I was really hearing was that you wanted a full buffer, trees and all the things. And, and, and having put development right next to our house, I'll tell you that that vegetative buffer made all the difference in the world as the banging and the banging and the banging and the drilling and everything to build that house. And now the thirteen cars that park next door to us every single day. That vegetative buffer makes a huge difference. Not just the lights, but the noise, the sound, general peace of mind, and the natural barrier that minimizes the impact and loss of privacy. And then that condition three about the future sign, future road sign connector, I mean, you might as well just say soon-to-be displaced residents here. Let's see. And so we ask for you to not reduce the street tree requirements for large canopy trees to medium trees. Please do not short-change our communities, whether it's both externally or internally facing trees. The large trees help the smaller trees grow, and they're paired large to small, large to small. Also, where will the displaced water overflow to from this wetland property? And then Mabry Woods. It's ninety-five percent canopy, proposed to be twenty-five percent. And it's gonna be called Mabry Woods. I mean, it reminds me of the place called The Orchards, where they built luxury housing where there was once orchards. I mean, it's a slap in the face. There's been four meetings so far for neighbors. I believe it's like nine o'clock at night on a Thursday night, we're three hours in. That's why you don't see many neighbors here tonight. It's just not, working people aren't able to show up for this. And it's incredibly short-sighted. And I heard the developer say, this is what we are going to build. So it sounds like for him, it's already approved. And then I heard Mr. Manley say, whoever goes with the motion, I've got the language. Well, you know, he's got the language for the approval or the denial. So please remember that. And, um, you know, where are the kids gonna play? Because walking on these sidewalks behind all of these driveways pulling out sounds very dangerous. Um, and a quick Google search says a three-story building will most likely be between the range of thirty-three and forty feet. So I'm not sure if the rendering, um, at two stories is, is it gonna be three stories? Or is that gonna be possible? And then to Mr. Manley's point, there are too many changes, and it's not consistent with what the planning board approved. And so we ask for you to deny this. Thank you.
Is there anyone online seeking recognition to speak? No, Madam Mayor? Your closest public hearing.
How long ago was this mobile home community? Does anybody know when that ended? Three years?
I'm one of the landowners of it.
Hi.
The mobile home park was officially closed about four years ago. It was down to just a couple mobile homes and, uh, they caved.
Can somebody explain to me about the parkland and landscape plan changes?
So, uh, parkland...
So uh parkland dedication is a requirement of our subdivision ordinance. Um, this is, this was a bit tricky because they're trying to get their zoning entitlements. They, because it's over fifty units, they have to go through the conditional rezoning, so we're looking at a site plan. Um, but it is, it is going to be a subdivision at some point too, if it's approved. And so we have to be cognizant of that as staff when we're reviewing this and advising the developer on what our standards are. We have to keep in mind that there are subdivision ordinance standards that will have to be met as well. So some of that is more to put them on notice that, and it and it could very much impact the site plan if they don't take into account that the subdivision ordinance requires X, Y, and Z. So uh parkland dedication is part of that. Uh, essentially, it will be resolved according to our standards at the time of the preliminary plat approval, which is a process that goes to Planning Board for administrative review. And so whether they provide land that can serve as parkland and meets our standards for that or if they can't meet that, then they will pay a fee in lieu of parkland. Whatever the standards will be, it will, we will review it and um hold them to that standard accordingly at the appropriate time in the process. So it's a little early. At this point, they could um.
So Matt, you're not recommending that we waive or?
I think.
They would have to meet that requirement at this point. That is not being asked to be waived or being asked for a variance or anything at this point.
It's not being asked to be designated or approved or waived or any of it. Because we've, as we've learned in the past, the subdivision ordinance is not is is not able to be varied from or granted relief at this juncture. This is a zoning decision and subdivision ordinance is not in play. And all I had, this came up a couple times, um, the future road connection sign is a require, another requirement of the subdivision ordinance. If you have a street stubout, the signage is required. So it's not something we're just trying to slap on the fence to.
Is it something that we can take off?
I would say no, but I'll defer to our legal.
Who's gonna come at us?
Technically, no, but um you make a fair point.
So you could seek a variance, right, from the Board of Adjustment since it's in the ordinance?
You can typically variances are for for hardships, but you could, I mean, ultimately, you can amend the subdivision. Cause I don't see a point in that requirement, really.
I don't see a point.
It was a re, uh, what I remember was a reaction, it was a reaction to the idea at another subdivision where we talked about connection and we wanted to notify that um we wanted to notify, it was requested to notify the property owners that this would happen. So um, it's not, to be honest, this is the first subdivision ordinance I've ever seen that required us to put a sign.
We usually put a barrier.
Put a barrier and it it may be on the plat.
Right.
But it's not.
It's not a sign.
It's not a sign.
That's what I would do.
And it may have been, may have been requested by the public at some point and council decided to amend the subdivision by public speaker.
I have another question for Mr. Grogan. Grogan?
Hi.
What was the reasoning for all of the changes after the planning board?
Uh, so our our last submittal was that Wednesday before the storm. And from that point until really like through October, there was no communication at all. And so we got, we got our, you know, agenda packet for Planning Commission and it had like lots, lots and lots of comments on it. Um, and we tried to address those, uh, I guess in between the the meetings and um I I, you know, so I guess that was inappropriate.
Can I hear from staff what those changes were? If you don't mind going through this.
The comments that were in the staff report about the un, the unresolved items that remained in the site plan were no, the developers notified of those well in advance of Planning Board, basically chose to go forward with the site plan that did not resolve those issues and then try to resolve those issues after Planning Board. So that's, that's, that was part of the reason why we said, well, if you can do that, but you've gotta go, if you wanna resolve all these issues and make changes that are different than what Planning Board saw, then that would need to go back to Planning Board.
And also, like, the vast majority of the the changes to the plan were were comments. They're not changes to the picture you see. The the change that we've moved forward with, the the street trees on the internal, that that's a positive change that Matt and I talked about. Um, the the changes were really just comments addressing what was in the report.
Can you give me an example of one of those?
Well, one of them, one of them's the 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 parkland thing.
Okay.
And and we talked about it again. He's like, no, you can't, we can't add, you know, we would have, we wouldn't have put it on there. That's not to be addressed in this meeting, so that's, that's fine. Um, but we were, it's, it's in the report. It's a comment in the report and my interpretation of that was, oh, well, then I need to address it.
Okay.
Even though it's not to be addressed here. And that was just a misunderstanding. We we went six weeks without talking, so.
I I would say another example of that is the parkland dedication and tree preservation canopy uh preservation were were overlapping and they were concerned that if it was parkland dedication, it wouldn't be able to count as tree canopy. And so they were only showing a twenty percent preservation. Once they realized that, you know, that may not be the case, then they are attempting to preserve more than thirty percent. But that was a change. It was different and um not trying to throw too many wrenches in the in the process this late. So they have at final site plan, they still have the choice to 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 meet our tree canopy preservation standard with the options that are in front of them. So that would be resolved at final site plan.
Jumping to a different note, is there, isn't there on-street parking? Cause I've got confused in all of this.
So there, so and on-street parking is required per urban residential. It wants you to have on-street parking. That's a um a design feature that creates more walkable neighborhoods, allows for overflow parking, allows for delivery trucks to have a place to go. Their site plan, driveway, 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 does not allow for on-street parking. Only in a few, on this, on a side street headed north, there's a little space where you might can put in a couple of spaces. But it is mostly near intersection, so you would have to be far enough away from the intersection if there was a enough space left to accommodate the appropriate length and width of an on-street parking space. We would ask for that to be put in. We would measure, we would say, you have enough space to put a spot in here to meet our standard, you need to put a spot in there. And that that would be a comment we would make on their site plan. And until they met that standard, we wouldn't move forward with final site plan approval. So it is unresolved at this stage, but we would resolve it through the final site plan review and approval process.
I mean, I'm just looking at this and I I lived in a community similar to this before we moved up here. And I I just can't imagine there being on-street parking at all just because of, people won't understand that you can only park, even if it's striped, you can only park right here and they're gonna end up parking behind people's driveways and it's like, it's a whole thing. Cause it seems like there's plenty of parking this year. I just, that's why I got confused when I kept going back and forth. But it looks like there is some extra parking that he's put in.
By the mail.
Maybe by the mailbox.
To Mr. Fitch's point about the logistics of having like essentially a dead-end road right now, right? Is that what we're pretty more or less working with?
Planning for for the future, yeah.
Right. Without a space for a turnaround at the very end there. Um, is there like a signage option about that?
Uh, like a dead-end sign?
Or something so people aren't just pulling through there and.
We may require that. I'm not a hundred percent sure off the top of my head what the requirements are. Uh, I know there's not a turnaround because the length of that segment doesn't exceed the the limit for for our fire to require either a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac turnaround. Same on the other side. Going towards Old Spartanburg Road, they have designed it as just a a dead-end, a stub. It doesn't connect, it's not, there's no future connection planned on that side. It just ends into where they've got programmed common space and open space. Um, but similarly, um, you're gonna have three or four or five driveways that are accessed in that segment, similar to on, or this, uh, you know, basically the same on either end of that main corridor that's running through there. So there shouldn't be a whole lot of traffic going through there, but if you did take it right and thought you were gonna connect to something and you're probably turning around in somebody's driveway, to your point, if you don't see a sign that says that. No through traffic or something to that.
Yeah. Okay, let's talk about the fence.
So the fence is an attempt, so so there's, there's no buffer requirement.
Right.
Single-family to single-family. The topic of a buffer of some type A, type C came up. We have the street stubout requirement subdivision ordinance staff kind of trying to navigate and uh manage a solution for in introducing a a buffer, but also trying to make sure that um we're achieving some needs for the, for the reason why the buffer came up, which is impacts neighboring property owner. And and navigate the um the street stubout concern. And so a fence, opaque fence seemed to be a good solution. Now, whether it's vegetated as well, not really making, you know, it would, you know, suggested that vegetation alone would not be a solution. If you wanna do vegetation in a fence, that's great. If you wanna do vegetation along the entire property line, that's your discretion. We're just basically making note that if you do require a buffer, a vegetated buffer for the adjacent properties, that you take into consideration that a fence is a good solution on the street stub section of that.
And what length of a fence would be the best solution?
So it would be roughly forty feet. So leave the sidewalk clear, I guess, is what the developer was asking, but the rest of it would be and we have forty-five-foot wide rights of way, so roughly forty feet.
So what about if the fence went from, can we put the site plan back up there? The, the end of one building to the end of the other building? So not the whole property line, just where the buildings are.
The fence?
The fence.
Or the back of one building to the back of the other building?
To cover all of the building.
What kind of distance would that be?
Eighty? I feel like it gotta be more than that.
It's probably a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
You know, you'd think.
Cause you said the driveways are twenty.
Yeah, so so each each building pad is fifty-two feet long. So fifty-two plus twenty plus forty-five plus twenty plus fifty-two, whatever that is.
Plus five for the sidewalk.
It's based in the forty-five. Two hundred, close to.
I mean, that seems like it would be a good compromise.
I think we're, so we are planting large trees where the buildings are. You can kinda see that um on either side of the uh of the right-of-way.
You mean these ones?
Yes, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I think, I think the, I think the fence needs to be pretty close. Like I, I think I mentioned, hopefully I mentioned it, um, the grade falls off hard there.
You didn't mention that.
Yep, and and um, and so the the fence needs to be pretty close to the edge of that road.
So then how far from the edge of that road is the actual property line?
Like twenty-five feet or so, but it.
So you could put the fence on the interior portion of that and then you could do some vegetative buffer on their property, on the outside of it?
Like um, I don't know that we can plant in the right-of-way or in the middle of it. I guess, Matt, we can talk about that. Is that what you're talking about? Is that what you mean?
I I guess I don't know that that would be the right-of-way. So you're talking about in the middle where the road is?
Yeah, like the, so the fence is the best way to block the headlights, which is why the fence came up, came up, so.
But aesthetically, for them looking onto that side, looking at some sort of a vegetative buffer, I think would be nicer than looking at a fence every day.
Well, that's, that's also fair, yeah. Um, and we don't, I don't have a problem of putting a tree or two in the right-of-way. That was not what's been available to us. But if we need to, you know, I think, I think there, I don't remember, I don't, we don't have the grid of what the, we have a tree legend, legend of what those, those are, all five of those I know are evergreens.
Okay.
Um, you know, so it's, it's gonna be a big buffer. I think the, like, the darker ones are cedar.
Okay.
So those are, those are big, big green trees that are always going to be green. Um, if we need to switch the the other, the lighter ones might not be evergreen. I I just don't recall. Um, if we need to put, you know, a few more evergreens there next to the buildings, I think that is appropriate.
The right-of-way would be the city's right-of-way, though.
It is.
Correct? So we can plant anything we want in the city's right-of-way.
Well, also, I feel like in the grand scheme of time and things, if sometime far in the future, there was a development built there, a couple trees is not gonna stop us from connecting the road.
Right. And it's gonna do a lot to make it look more natural, I feel like.
Far in the future.
Can we do that? Will you do that?
I could put, I can put those trees there.
Okay.
I I need permission. And I don't know that we do that with zoning necessarily, but but I'm fine putting trees in the right-of-way.
And an eight-foot fence.
Yeah, with the eight-foot fence.
Like, how long will they make it?
What do you mean?
Like, how how long is the fence from the road or wherever they store it?
Talking about from the back of the building to the back of the other building? So probably a hundred.
I kinda missed it there in the middle, like, if you accepted that or if they were still discussing.
Trying to make it the length, basically, of both of the buildings.
So all of this would be, just for clarity, under um.
Three?
Three. So what type of buffer, what type of fence, the details, the plantings?
Would, would type of buffer, would that be with trees?
So type A was what Planning Board recommended?
The type C has the burn and everything. And if it already dropped off.
Type C is a twenty-five-foot width.
Okay.
Would be type A?
Okay, and then what was our resolution on this?
We'll take that.
We would just sign off.
And I do wanna point out that what we're already showing there is in excess of what a type A buffer would require for that space. So.
Okay.
Just.
Okay, and then we're gonna remove the sign. And then I guess we don't really need to specify the length of the fence, but we would specify that it would go from the back of.
Long building line?
How would you say that, Matt?
The fence length? Uh, that's a little bit tricky. The front, from the frontage, from the fr, front of the buildings facing, front of the building facing Brooklyn to the rear of the building to the north.
Members of the council, I'll ask a simple question. I'm not trying to cut off conversation. But would you like for us to kinda take your direction and come back with a nice neat package so that you know what we're talking about? So that you could have specific conditions and we're not doing this on the fly? It seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions and things on the fly.
Well, so then that means it's another month before we have any movement on this. I mean, I don't, I don't feel confused on what we're.
I mean, I have a clear understanding of what we're proposing. It's just the right, the right way to say it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give you that option, so.
Lindsay's really good at reading these anyway, and she takes great notes, so I I feel like we're more than capable of doing this.
And and one other thing, I don't know whether we've closed the public hearing or not.
She did. She did.
Okay. There was somebody that raised their hand, so the gentleman on, Jesse, I'm sorry, we closed the public hearing, so.
Jesse's my engineer, so.
Oh, he was here to answer questions. He may have a statement. Uh, I mean, he may have something to add.
He's, he's good. If we run into a.
If we, if we run into a problem, he's there.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm just not gonna say this thing about the sign, Angie, and we'll deal with that later.
We'll have to amend the subdivision ordinance to take it out.
Okay, and then the only other question I have before I read this, cause I know they need to go, cause they have school tomorrow. Number seven's not on our list here.
So you would have to agree to condition number seven as presented by the developer?
Okay.
And you might wanna, I might want to put that language up first.
I think I have, developer agrees to plant one small tree between driveways and large maturing trees where feasible. I think that's me, pretty much it.
That, that'll work. And then on one, did you need anything to amend to include the existing vegetation is preserved? And if it's removed, they would have to recalculate?
Yes.
Yes.
You want, you need that?
All right, I'm not reading any other motions after this one. Madam Mayor, I move City Council adoption ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation that is subject to property pins nine-five-seven-eight-four-three-seven-zero-seven-seven, nine-five-seven-eight-five-three-zero-zero-one-three and nine-five-seven-eight-four-three-nine-two-three-eight. From R fifteen medium density residential zoning district to UR CZD urban residential conditional zoning district. Based on the site plan and list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. The development shall be consistent with the following permitted uses, residential, single-family, sixty-town homes. The development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained therein. Permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to include developer proposed conditions encounters to planning board proposed conditions. One, developer shall remove bamboo stand at slash near the corner of Old Spartanburg Road and Brooklyn Avenue. Existing hardwood and evergreen trees intermixed within bamboo area shall be preserved. If existing trees are removed, the tree canopy preservation calculation shall be updated accordingly. Two, the mavery name shall be represented on internal streets. Three, the developer shall construct an eight-foot privacy fence and type A buffer from the front of the building facing Brooklyn to the back of the building to the north? Yes.
Yes.
Um, thank you. Um, I think that's all of that one, that's all of that one, right? Four, developer agrees to provide on-street parking as shown on the northern portion of the site near the male kiosk. Five, developer shall design secondary parking spaces to meet or exceed section six dash five dash five-point-one and six dash five dash five-point-three motor vehicle parking space design requirements. Six, developer shall be allowed to plant one medium tree every forty feet to meet street tree requirements along Brooklyn Avenue due to NC DOT requirements, topography and public sewer considerations, see landscaping plan five dash two-five dash five-point-one-seven. Seven, developer agrees to plant one small tree between driveways and large maturing trees where feasible. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville Gen H twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and because the requested zoning, rezoning to urban residential conditional zoning district and the associated proposed development align with the Gen H twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan, future land use and use and conservation map and the character area description for multi-generational living. We find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing, and because the proposed development would improve an underutilized property in close proximity to a major commercial corridor. Two, the proposed development would provide additional needed housing, and three, the proposed development is clustered to reduce pressure on environmentally sensitive areas at the rear of the site.
Okay, is there any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion for conditional zoning district Brooklyn townhomes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. And that will, uh, be up to the developer and the planning department to work out the details. Next one.
Natalie.
Maggie. Second wins.
You did a wonderful job of speaking, thank you for getting up, yep.
Thank you.
You too. What are we doing now?
Okay, what are we doing? All right, well, we jump back to A, a zoning text amendment. Aligning the urban village and urban residential with Gen H comp plan.
Okay, uh, this one would be about as complex as that one.
Please don't say that.
I'm just kidding, it's just. This one's really simple. There was a few little, I have a few wrinkles, but for the most part, it's simple. So essentially, what we are doing, the urban village and urban residential zoning districts make references to future land use categories that are in our comprehensive plan. We adopted a new comprehensive plan, we have new future land use categories, we have to update this section to align with our new comp plan. That's what we're doing. One, I'll note a couple of other changes. One is our, uh, it was medium intensity neighborhood, had to be, um, within a hundred feet of a non-residential zoning district to be eligible for urban village or urban residential. Uh, instead of medium intensity neighborhood, we're changing that to multi-generational living, those are somewhat comparable. And we're changing it from, from a hundred feet to three hundred and fifty feet. Um, the hundred feet seems somewhat arbitrary, the three hundred and fifty feet is the, uh, the length of an average city block, if you look at our downtown block. So, a block away from non-residential, um, would be the qualifier there. Uh, another change for urban residential, it, right now, it only allows multifamily, uh, residential. And so this would introduce single-family and two-family as options, but it, there's language in there that would cap, uh, that you couldn't just use it for a single-family subdivision. You couldn't have more than, you could not have more than fifty percent of the units, single-family detached. So that ensures that you get a mix of housing types. If someone's gonna do single-family, they would also have to do some multifamily or some townhomes. So we're in, so, that again is meeting the vision of the comprehensive plan for providing, providing a mix of housing types. So we're introducing that. Uh, because we're introducing that, we're borrowing some other language from urban village and applying it to urban residential, which exempts single-family and two-family housing from this driveway, uh, limitation where, uh, only true, only two driveways are permitted per block face. This would exempt single-family and two-family from that limitation. Uh, to, to, to kinda show the correlation between the previous comp plan, future land use categories and the Gen H comp plan, I've, I've got those listed here and how they correlate with one another. Um, you can visualize it here as well. On the left, that's our twenty-thirty comp plan, the two thousand nine comp plan. Um, it shows all of our future land use categories. Um, the one on the right is our Gen H comp plan, and I'm only showing the, the, the character areas where urban village and urban residential would be permitted. You'd have to visualize that on the left, but the brown, the orange, the pink, the red, the purple, all of that permitted. Um, urban, uh, urban village and urban residential. In short, we are actually shrinking the amount of land that, and concentrating the appropriate locations for this zoning district. So I think it's a little more targeted with what we're doing, and that's because we're, we're working, um, from a comprehensive plan that was very targeted as well. Uh, subdivision ordinance references the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, we are changing, proposing to change that to a general reference to an adopted, uh, guidance. Um, staff finds that this is, uh, consistent with the character area descriptions for multi-generational living, neighborhood center, mixed-use employment, mixed-use commercial and downtown, as well as our focused intensity nodes. Um, I've got an excerpt from multi-generational living, you guys know it, it calls for a mix of housing types, and that's what, um, this achieves. For cons- for compatibility, um, we reviewed the standards of urban residential and, uh, and urban village in light of the goals and the guiding principles of the comp plan and found that, um, it does, it is consistent with those goals and guiding principles, uh, across the board. Uh, and I have some excerpts from our guiding principles, these are like the foundational concepts that go behind the recommendations in our comprehensive plan, and, uh, these zoning districts in particular uh, are very much rooted in those guiding principles. Um, and the chapter five design guidelines, uh, similarly, the, the design standards that are in these zoning districts are, um, uh, comparable to those recommended in that chapter. The third criteria changed conditions, uh, the changed conditions is that we adopted a new comp plan. Uh, the, uh, public interest, the text amendment, uh, maintains and improves the use of the urban residential and urban village as critical zoning tools, which advance the goals of the Gen H comprehensive plan. Uh, no impacts on public facilities or natural, uh, environment. And we have a, um, consistency statement that was unanimously supported by the planning board at their November meeting. And we have their rationale for approval on the screen, and we have some draft rationale, a draft rationale for denial. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
Open that public hearing. We had, uh, let me check. Um, Urban Village Lynn Williams, who had signed up to speak.
I'll try to make this quick, Lynn Williams, Chat McAvenue, thank you for your time. I did speak about this at the planning board as well, um, just some concerns, so, um, generally when we're thinking about urban village, um, the Wiki definition is urban village, medium density housing, mixed-use zoning, good public transport, emphasis on pedestrian and public space, provides both housing and jobs. Uh, my concern here is that we need more protections in place for the historic uses, the historic character and historic neighborhoods, as well as critically sensitive environments. So when we are making these urban villages and, you know, developing and all this, that, um, there's just not enough oversight to protect these particular features. And so that's just something I think that you might wanna think about and plan for. Um, let's see. And then, yeah, new urbanism and its influences in the Charlotte region, written by Robert Stuteville from the A, from a CNU journal, greenery is an important and prominent aspect of urban environment exemplified by the city's historic greenways and visible in early traditional neighborhood developments where the trees have already grown to full size. So I think these are important points. Um, also related note, USC Charlotte Urban Institute concerns and conversations out of Charlotte. Denser housing can negatively impact the character and integrity of our neighborhoods. Uh, some elected officials have raised concerns about the effect that allowing denser development has on historically black neighborhoods, accelerating gentrification and displacement, selling houses, um, for higher prices in new developments. Um, and then, yes, so those concerns, higher costs, ha- higher housing costs, not specified as affordable, loss of green space, um, floodwater mitigation, noise pollution, reduction of privacy, traffic, air pollution and heat islands. Um, and then just kind of quoting Councilmember Victoria Wallington, who represents District Three, covering much of west and southwest Charlotte. If you think for a single second that abolishing single-family zoning exclusivity on all lots will not incentivize investors to tear down their properties, half of which of my neighborhood are owned by out-of-state LLCs and build multifamily rentals, I would encourage you to drive through Westover Hills, Revolution Park, Camp Green, Lakewood, Parkview, Greer Heights, and a host of other neighborhoods throughout the Crescent in which land is relatively cheaper. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is anyone online seeking recognition?
No, Madam Mayor.
Close that public hearing. Counsel, any discussion on our motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm of the City Council adopted ordinance amending the official city of Hendersonville zoning ordinance, Article Five zoning district classification, Section five dash twenty-four. Urban village conditional zoning district classification UV and Section five dash twenty-five urban residential conditional zoning district classification UR. And City of Hendersonville subdivision ordinance, Section one point oh seven. Relationship to other laws and policies as presented by staff, based on the following. The position is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville Gen H comprehensive plan based on the information from staff analysis and the public hearing. And because the proposed text amendment aligns with the Gen H twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan, future land use and conservation and the character area descriptions. We also find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the following information of staff analysis and a public hearing because urban residential and urban village zoning districts were outdated. The zoning text amendment updates the language in the zoning code to align with the newly adopted Gen H comprehensive plan. And the subdivision text orders updates outdated language referencing with the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not, those in favor of this zoning text amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, okay. Knock that one down. Uh, next we have a rezoning, a standard rezoning, three-two-nine Signal Hill Road.
You hit me again. So this, standard rezoning, as you mentioned, for a single parcel on Signal Hill Road. Um, it is a point four-two acre site that's currently zoned RCT, and the proposed zoning is C two. And it's in our future land use designation of innovation. You can see the site here, it's the white building with the blue roof, and you kinda get an, an idea of how it orients on Signal Hill Road on those upper photos. On the bottom left photo, there's just a picture of a swale that runs along the, um, uh, what's, that would be the west boundary. Um, in the background of that bottom left photo is Signal Hill Road. So that's just catching some runoff coming down the hill and kinda wrapping it around the rear of the site. The bottom right is kinda the, looking towards a ma- or La- LaFayette Street would be, uh, in the background. They've, the business that's currently at this site is, you can see some of the parking associated with that business on the right. And on the left is the adjacent parcel, and it's basically, it's undeveloped, very brushy, scrubby, vegetated, uh, large, uh, parcel to the rear of this subject property. Uh, so, in your packet was a comparison between the two zoning districts, the one that's currently zoned and what's being requested. Just to highlight a couple of the differences, um, between the two district, districts, there are thirteen shared, uh, permitted uses, uh, uses that are permitted in both districts. Um, there are nine additional permitted uses that are similar, but RCT residential, commercial transition has some kinda limitation on it, you know, you can do this, but no greater than five thousand square feet or something to that effect. But otherwise, pretty similar. Um, the big difference is that there are thirty-three additional permitted uses in C two and four additional special uses in C two that RCT does not. So that, that is a quantifiable, um, much more permissive zoning district. Uh, C two is, and, and more intense, uh, in this nature. And there is a, uh, thirteen-foot difference in the height requirement as well. So looking at the, uh, criteria for, uh, rezoning, the comp plan calls for this to be, uh, as innovation. That's the character area, uh, the majority of the surrounding properties are also designated as innovation. Um, as it transitions to the north, i- it, it changes to multi-generational living. And, uh, just an idea of what innovation calls for. This area supports light manufacturing, maker spaces, creative offices and warehouses. Commercial service, commercial services cater to both daytime workers and local residents. It's conveniently located near major transportation routes. The design follows compatibility standards using transitional spaces and landscaping to hide loading docks. The area features diverse parcel and building sizes with central open spaces and connected greenway system. Streets vary between pedestrian-friendly and those accommodating trucks. So continuing our review, the, um, staff does find it somewhat consistent with the, uh, comprehensive plan. Uh, the C two zoning. The C two zoning aligns with innovation character area. There are some inconsistencies when it talks about design. C two does not have design standards. The description really has, you know, wants to achieve certain ends that are, that are really achieved through good design, and so we wouldn't have any way of dictating that under C two. For compatibility, looking at the subject property and the surroundings, currently zoned RCT, houses of transit slash transportation business, it's point four-two acres, which is smaller than most of the properties around it and in that immediate area. Most of the properties are greater than an acre in size, and there are several over five acres in size. Properties running along Signal Hill Road are primarily vacant or contain residential uses. Most residential uses are single-family homes and not necessarily part of a planned development. However, there is Signal Ridge Apartments and the proposed Duncan Terrace Apartments that are both in vicinity of the subject property. They're dispersed across Signal Hill. There's five properties that front Signal Hill that contain commercial uses, including this subject property. The lack of intense development in this area could, on its face, could be attributed to the lack of city sewer service in the immediate vicinity. There is sewer located at the intersection of Thompson Street and Signal Hill, and then also Four Seasons, and then at Berkeley Road at Hallford Estates. And Signal Hill itself is somewhat of a dividing factor there. So staff reviewed the goals and guiding principles found in Chapter Four to help us evaluate compatibility. The proposed zoning of C two was, we actually found it to be inconsistent with eight out of nine of the goals of the comprehensive plan, and it was inconsistent with seven, all seven of the guiding principles. And so just a quick note here, the comprehensive plan is new. We've had just a couple of cases that have come to you where we've used, used it as a tool to guide comprehensive plan consistency. We are basing our comprehensive plan consistency evaluation primarily and almost strictly on the future land use map and that character area description. So there's a whole lot more stuff in the compling besides just that map. So that other stuff, the goals, guiding principles, those other really important aspects of the plan, we're using to evaluate compatibility. They think, we believe that they illuminate that question of whether this is compatible or not. So that's one criteria, that's how we're using it. I'll also note that we adopted a short-term implementation plan. Implementation plan is the last chapter of the, of the comprehensive plan. In that short-term list, there was a, an action item to rezone our, our commercial, general commercial districts to mixed-use districts, to start to introduce housing opportunities and also introduce design standards. So essentially, it's calling for us to rezone the C two and C three to CMU or HMU, one of those mixed-use districts. So that, that was in there. So just want to highlight that. The, moving on to change conditions, most, the biggest change condition has been the construction of new commercial uses in the area. There's one across the street from the subject property, and, and on the same side, closer down to the Thompson Street intersection, both new commercial developments there. Secondly, and this is important, NCDOT has been in the process of developing an express design for Thompson Street, Signal Hill, Berkeley Road. I think Duncan Hill is included in that design as a alternate route to sixty-four. And so I don't, there's no timeline on what those transportation improvements. You may be familiar with the dumbbell about, or the peanut about, that was kind of thrown around with some of these other developments in that area. That's part of that, of that express design effort. So keep that, you know, I think that's something that's important to keep in mind is future transportation improvements and how that relates to land use and the types of zoning that will dictate what those land uses are. For public interest, staff finds that the proposed expansion of C two zoning increases the potential for commercial uses. However, expansion to commercial uses along Signal Hill Road could be detrimental to traffic congestion and residential uses in the area, if not constructed in a manner that is compatible with the surroundings and future transportation improvements. For public facilities, just noting that subject property is currently served only by city water, there's no annexation proposed at this time, and Signal Hill is an NCDOT maintained secondary road. And for natural environment, there are no existing trees nor environmentally sensitive areas within the proposed rezoning area. The, the planning board voted four to two to recommend approval, and they put forth the comprehensive plan consistency statement on the screen, and these, well, they recommended one rationale for approval, but staff has included a second rationale for approval, and we also have rationale for denial, and staff has those recommendations for you available as well. Any questions?
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Open that public hearing. No one here has signed up. Is there anyone online seeking?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. In that case, we will close that public hearing. Counsel?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zonal map for the City of Hendersonville, changing the zoning destination of the subject property pen nine-five-seven-nine dash oh-six dash four-one-two-six from RCT residential commercial transition to C two. I'm going to read them right away. Secondary business, based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville Gen H Comprehensive Plan, based on the information from the staff analysis, and because the proposed zoning of C two aligns with the Gen H 2045 Comprehensive Plan, future land use and conservation map, and the character area description for innovation. And two, furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing, and because, one, C two zoning would allow for greater economic use of the subject property, two, introduction of C two zoning along this corridor would lead to further expansion of commercial opportunities in this area.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the motion for a standard rezoning on Signal Hill Road, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next.
Your hat.
I get up at three-thirty in the morning.
Oh, no.
When you, when you said the kids were, I said I'll be up before then.
Good luck.
Next is a subdivision text amendment, changes to double frontage lots.
Hello, everyone.
Your first time up here?
First time up here, yes.
Almost ten p.m.
Yes, out of prime time. So yes, I'll be presenting on changes to double frontage lots in new subdivisions. So this was an applicant-initiated subdivision text amendment by Zach Grogan, who you heard from earlier. Zach proposed a waiver for the requirements in Section three-point-zero-three-D and Section three-point-zero-four-C of the subdivision ordinance that would ultimately allow double frontage lots in more instances. The applicant's reasoning was to enable more urban site design options while also aligning with NCDOT requirements. Staff took the applicant's proposal and made changes that we believe align more broadly with city goals, and we also came to the conclusion that the request for the waiver would not be legally possible. So we instead made proposals, proposed revisions that would allow double frontage in more instances, which we believe will assist in managing street access on more roads throughout the city. So I also wanted to mention that in 2022, our planning staff and planning board created a priority list for text amendments, and number eleven was double, double frontage lots. So we're finally making that goal a reality by making these revisions. So first, I wanted to give you two definitions. A double frontage lot is a lot which fronts upon two parallel streets and/or which fronts upon two streets which do not intersect at the boundaries of the lot. And then a marginal access street is a street meeting public street standards that provide access solely to lots inaccessible to abutting higher-order streets. There's an image on the screen behind you that shows the different elements of this. So we have double frontage lots here. This is the higher-order street, and then we have a marginal access street here with driveways coming off of that. So the goal of this is to get driveways off of that major street onto this marginal access street. And so we do allow this in our current ordinance. However, it's just for expressways or boulevards, those classified streets. So how this works in our ordinance is we will require a marginal access street if someone wants to subdivide on one of those streets, and then in turn, they are allowed to have double frontage. It's legal to have double frontage. And so what we have found is that there are a lot of other streets in the City of Hendersonville, and so developers are coming in, they're wanting to do double frontage lots, and so what we ultimately have done is expand the number of street classifications that allow double frontage. And so I have the ordinance up here, the revision. So in green, we have the things that we've added, and the red is things we've taken out. So ultimately, we have added the street of Thoroughfare, and then this other street classification, which we have created our own classification for this. So it's any street with an average annualized daily traffic, or AADT, of greater than or equal to three hundred, are required to provide a marginal access street, and then that double frontage would be allowed. So this brings in some of these smaller streets, but doesn't, doesn't bring in every single street in the city. The AADT is, we have some of those records already. Our Public Works Department has that. They're also going through and trying to classify, I believe, all of the streets in the city with AADT. We can also request that from them, and they told us there's about a weak turnaround on that. So it's definitely data that we have access to or could have access to. We are also revising the non-access buffer zone, which was originally in our ordinance as twenty-five feet, and we have actually reduced that to twelve-point-five feet. So what this is, is a portion on the either expressway, boulevard, thoroughfare, or AADT at or above three hundred. We require that to be not set aside, but you can't access the lot from that, that side of, from that road. And so the last revision that we made was in three-point-oh-four access to lots. We once again expanded the streets for our requirements for consolidation. And I forgot about this one, we also added in the other streets to the three-point, or four-point-oh-three street section. And so we found that the revisions were consistent with the 2018 Bicycle Plan, which calls for the city to regularly update local street design standards to reflect national best practices, and regularly update the city's traffic calming policies. And additionally, the text amendment is consistent with the 2023 Walkendo Pedestrian Plan because it supports decreasing the number of driveways onto existing streets. And then we also found the revisions to be consistent with many of the Gen H Comprehensive Plan goals, including vibrant neighborhoods, authentic community character, safe streets and trails, reliable and accessible utility services, and welcoming and inclusive communities. And we found it to be consistent with the Gen H guiding principles of compact development, desirable and affordable housing, and connectivity. With regards to change conditions, public interest in public facilities, we believe the text amendment will decrease the number of driveways exiting onto existing streets, therefore benefiting public safety and public infrastructure. The planning board legislative committee looked at this on August twentieth, and they voiced support for this and asked some clarifying questions, and the, the draft actually changed after that a bit. For planning board on September twelfth, they reviewed and unanimously voted to recommend for approval. And this was the consistency statement that they used, and this was the draft, or the rationale for approval that they, they used. And I can take any questions.
Anyway.
Really wish we had a question, just to put you on the spot. It's too late for me to think of any.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
No one here has signed up to speak. Is there anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead and close that public hearing. Counsel? It was turned, isn't it? Madam Mayor?
No, let her do it. Let her do it.
Please.
No, no.
I move City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official City of Hendersonville subdivision ordinance, Section three-point-zero-three, lots, Section three-point-zero-four, access to lots, and Section four-point-zero-three, streets, based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville Gen H 2045 Comprehensive Plan, 2018 Bicycle Plan, 2023 Walkendo Pedestrian Plan, based on the information from staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the petition aligns with the city's adopted plans, policy guidance to promote vibrant neighborhoods, create compact development, establish connectivity, and improve walkability and bikeability throughout the community. We find this petition, in conjunction with the recommendations given by the staff, to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the proposed text amendment creates flexibility for property owners while still limiting potential impacts to the greater community, which include congestion management through driver consolidation and reduction of conflict points for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. The proposed text amendment expands the number of streets that will allow double frontage lots while also imposing more requirements to ensure that these lots do not negatively impact the community. The proposed text amendment will assist in redeveloping smaller lots in areas targeted for inclusion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the text amendment regarding double frontage lots, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. All right. Already taking, well, we had one canceled. Already taken.
Have a good night. Good night. Same. I do right now, just warm up, actually. Do you do twenty jumping jacks? How about five? Five?
Okay. Fire Department staffing budget amendment.
Madam Mayor, member of City Council. My friends are here. As much as Jenny Floyd wanted to be here and listen to the public hearings that we brought for you tonight, thought it was better that she spent time doing professional development and networking at a conference. So she gets credit for all the work on this, and any errors that I make during this presentation, I'll take that. So a little bit of history on this, we have been monitoring overtime and staffing in the fire department, especially related to benefits we implemented back in 2022, 2021 range around paid family leave, and in other externalities, we've been seeing on overtime costs related to staffing needs. So with the fire department, like some of our other departments, they have to have those people on the truck to respond in case of emergency. When people in planning staff, for example, might go out on paternity leave, we have other people just jump in to help, you know, take care of the work that needs to be done. So what we're going to talk about tonight, we've been talking about, about for a year now with you all, and with you all, and we had a proposal to potentially do an over-hire to help reduce overtime costs in the Fire Department due to folks being out on vacation or paid family leave. And so, we're back here tonight. About a year ago, we kind of froze hiring. We dropped our minimum staffing levels to 10 from 13 in order to combat that overtime, just because we were seeing a decrease in our revenue sources. And we went and tried to acquire a safer grant, which would have helped hire on these firefighters with the assistance of federal grant funds. However, we did not receive that safer grant this year. So, we're coming to you now with some options that we've discussed over the past year to help reduce overtime and help kind of the mental health and maintain a higher staffing level in our Fire Department. So, I'm going to present three scenarios and then a recommendation. And what has prompted this is a recent hiring process. So, kudos to the City Council for all the work they've done from a salary and benefits perspective, and some of the adjustments we've made internally to do more acceptance of folks without certifications in the application process, and do actually training for them through our own resources here. We had 29 applicants with our recent hiring process. That's much better than we've been seeing in the past four to five years. We had six eligible candidates identified, two with firefighter and EMT certified, two firefighter certified, and two with no certifications. We currently have three vacancies. So, we can easily fill the three vacancies we need to fill. However, we did have six good candidates, and we felt like this might be the prime opportunity to consider the over-hiring of three additional firefighters to hopefully reduce our overtime. Our current overtime budget is $270,000, and our current staffing per shift with vacancies and folks out on leave is 11 FTEs on A shift, 12 on B, and 12 on C. If you'll note, our minimum staffing is 13 per shift. So, scenario one and two are just comparing our future outlook for best case and worst case for end-of-year overtime costs. Right now, if current staffing numbers are maintained and the vacancies are filled, and considering upcoming vacation FMLA and paid family leave, we're expected to be about $32,000 over our overtime budget, totaling $302,000. Scenario two, so if this is what, if our, just our first quarter actuals from this fiscal year are maintained, we'd be at about $192,000 of overtime. This does not consider kind of what we know coming from a vacation FMLA and paid family leave perspective. So, this would be a very hopeful future for our overtime budget. So, scenario three, this would be adding in the over-hire of three firefighter EMTs. The end-of-year overtime cost forecast would be about $175,000. This does include everything from scenario one, so this is saying, hey, we know these things are coming up, and so we're baking that into our estimates. We'd be about $95,000 under budget, and it includes those two projected FMLA uses. So, after considering the three scenarios, we do believe the current budget in FY25 does have the capacity to cover the cost for the remainder of the year. So, essentially, our salary and benefits budget would be $110,000 for the remainder of the year. The overtime cost savings is $95,000, leaving about a $16,000 gap for the remainder of the year. We've identified a capital item, a Lucas chest compression system, that we would put off funding for the remainder of the year in order to cover that $16,000 gap. And you can see our end-of-year full-time staffing level would be 14 firefighters per shift. Moving forward, though, you know, this is just not a singular year consideration. We need to look at this from a future year perspective. So, FY26 and beyond, our anticipated overtime budget would be about $100,000 per year, which is about $170,000 in savings. The total cost for the three firefighters is $221,000. So, in reality, to hire these three additional firefighters, it's about a cost of $50,000 per year going forward. So, we're hiring, over-hiring three firefighters for the cost of $50,000 versus $221,000. The benefits being that we'll have better mental health for our firefighters. We'll have to call trucks out of service less, and we'll have less overtime considerations every year as we're kind of watching this and trying to keep on top of our overtime budget. There are also diversity aspects to the hires. We have veteran, Spanish-speaking hire, and African-American hire in this pool as well. So, it's good diversity hires. And when we are fully staffed, so we'd have 14 total, we would be able to test our quick-response vehicle concept that is part of your strategic plan goals. And so, that means we would be able to run a two-person Tahoe to a call where someone may have just fallen over, or it's a simple medical call. We'd be able to test that out when we actually had 14 firefighters on staff. We would staff three per truck and then two for the quick-response vehicle. So, I will stand by with any questions.
Questions?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopt a budget amendment 20520. That's all for us presented.
Okay, is there any discussion? In favor of the budget amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I have it.
That was a quick one.
They waited all that time, and we didn't even really say anything.
I commend the Fire Department on the diversity issue.
Okay. Discussion regarding floodplain development. I think we could maybe put that one.
Well, we're just talking about doing a workshop. We're not really having a whole discussion.
Tell us what you need, and we're ready to do it.
I would like to do a workshop.
Okay.
I think it's needed.
Okay, good.
On floodplain development.
Yeah, I'm going to make that motion if that's okay with everybody.
But I want to understand from Councilmember Hensley.
They're calling me out.
They are proud of him, Hensley, excuse me. Wanted to bring an outside person in. We'll follow up afterwards on the potential. We'll get Mike Huffman involved, and we'll find some experts. How about that?
I think that would be good.
Okay, all right, so.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council direct staff to schedule a floodplain development workshop for January 22, 2025.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of that workshop, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I have it. Okay.
I think it would be awesome to have some planning board members with us there.
All right.
I think we could safely invite any person who's making decisions in western North Carolina to this workshop. So.
Okay, boards, commissions, committee appointments.
Oh, my God.
You want to wait until January?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Should we do it?
Let's just do it. Let's just do it. Let's just do it. Let's just do it.
Wait, wait a minute.
All right, so first then is Board of Adjustment. We have several vacancies and one candidate.
Madam Mayor, I would like to appoint Rhona Regan, city resident, to the Board of Adjustment.
So, there, Rhona Regan has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Not? Those in favor of Rhona Regan for filling the unexpired term of Melinda Lawrence to expire six of 2025. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I have it. We need to get some people on that board.
We need to get, so I did ask Jill to reach out to some of the folks that had applied to be on planning board because there's not as many spots open, but she only heard.
I'm going to say, literally every one of them said, no, thanks, that they wanted to stay on. So, we'll have to do more advertising and more.
Maybe some of these people would step over there. This is a nice, long list.
This is a long list.
Except, probably a lot of them don't live in the city. Okay, next is the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. We have one vacancy on that committee. Would anyone like to end a long list? Would anyone like to make a nomination?
Madam Mayor, I recommend Penny Pearson for the Diversity and Inclusion Board.
Penny Pearson.
Penny Pearson, yes, that was what. Penny Pearson has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Not? Those in favor of appointing Penny Pearson to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And she will, again, be filling in unexpired term. Environmental Sustainability Board. We have two city resident vacancies. We have several applications. Only one qualifies. Scott Harmon.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Scott Harmon to the Environmental Sustainability Board.
Thank you. Scott Harmon has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Not? Those in favor of appointing Scott Harmon to a term expiring six of 26, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I have it, and he is appointed. And again, we have one more spot to fill. Historic Preservation, let's see. We have three slots to fill, and we have five people, two of whom currently serve and are interested in continuing to serve, and then we have three new applications. Would anyone like to make an appointment to any of these terms?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council reappoint Cheryl Jones to a three-year term.
Cheryl Jones has been nominated. Are there further nominations to third-year term?
I would move that the City Council reappoint James Welter.
And is, are there any other nominations for Historic Preservation for a three-year term?
I move that City Council appoint Edward Sine. So, I'm going to assume you say that.
Are there further nominations for three-year terms on Historic Preservation? If not, those in favor of appointing Cheryl Jones, James Welter, and Edward Sine, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Let's have those. Planning Board.
Madam Mayor, oh, I'm sorry. I move that the City Council appoint David McKinley to the Planning Board. He will be filling the vacancy of Beth Robertson. His term will expire on 12/25. After that, he will then be eligible for his first full three-year term. I would also like to.
Okay, so, David McKinley.
I'd also like to move that City Council reappoint Donna Waters to her appointment.
David McKinley has been nominated for a vacancy appointment, and Donna Waters has been nominated for a full three-year term. Are there further nominations for either of these slots? If not, those in favor of David McKinley and Donna Waters, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I have it. Okay. Tree Board.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Richard Bowerman to a three-year term on the Tree Board expiring 12/27. And I also move that we appoint Mark Madsen to a three-year term on the Tree Board expiring 12/27.
Okay. Richard Bowerman and Mark Madsen have been nominated for three-year terms on the Tree Board. Are there further nominations? If not, those in favor of Richard Bowerman and Mark Madsen for the Tree Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I have it. All right. Quick look. Yeah, glad you guys were prepared.
You did.
All right, City Manager Report.
Mayor of all, members of the City Council, we continue to continue to see an adjustment report is included in your agenda for your review. I've talked enough tonight.
You've actually been really quiet tonight. What are you talking about?
All right, Counsel, anyone have anything you wanted to bring?
I do want to say that we did our last housing listening session on Tuesday, and it was a Spanish-first session. I did not know this. I mean, we all know that Alice Justice is awesome, but she also speaks Spanish and led the meeting, which blew me away. And I've embarrassed her, and that's okay. It was an amazing meeting. I have never seen that sort of engagement from the Spanish-speaking community in anything that we've done, and I think that's because it was a Spanish-first meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you to the team that helped put it together.
Thank you. I heard it went great. All right, closed session.
You don't think we need it tonight?
Are we good with, what Lou needs to say?
Are you sure?
You good?
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, we're good.
Angie doesn't need to close session.
No.
He's just doing his job.
In that case, thank you all, but we are.